Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Thanks for taking the time out of your day to be here with us this morning for the Tuesday, September 6th, San Mateo County Board of Supervisors meeting. And if you all stand and join me in the pledge.
My pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, and to the people of the United States of justice.
Mr. Or Ms., Ms. Clerk, could you please call the role?
Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Groom.
Present.
Supervisor Horsley.
Present.
Supervisor Tissier.
Here.
President Slocum.
Here. Thank you. We're going to move now to public comment.
Public comment is reserved for persons wishing to address the board on county-related matters that are not otherwise on this agenda or on the consent agenda. Speakers will be provided two minutes, and an extension may be provided to you at the discretion of the board president. We have one public comment from Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the board, my fellow veteran, Mr. Malpian, County Council, Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county and adopting assisted outpatient treatment, known as LoR's Law. Please remove the Measure A-funded Serenity House Construction Project Resolution Agenda Item Number 60 from the consent agenda if you believe whether the voters approve Measure K depends upon whether Measure A-funded programs have been successful. LoR's Law started successfully connecting people with serious mental illness and treatment resistance to the treatment that they need to recover in San Mateo County on July 1st. It's effective because it holds treatment providers responsible for the results and identifies the opportunities for future successes and any failures without using Measure A funds. The early review of mentally ill people in jail program was authorized to use Measure A funds for a jail-based health staffer and a behavioral health and recovery services navigator to connect detainees living with mental health issues to community-based treatment on July 23rd, 2013, for a period of two years. The Measure A Oversight Committee report on the early review program's first-year results suggests to me that it failed to connect 84.6 percent of the 283 mentally ill persons released. The Measure A Deputy County Manager advised me after your last meeting that no documents could be located showing whether any of those 283 mentally ill persons released were actually connected with treatment. In other words, the early review program could be a failure. LoR's Law is already producing measurable positive results. Because mental illness is exacerbated by incarceration, all of the people who are supposed to be helped by the early review program may have actually been harmed. Like the early review program, the Serenity House program fails to address mental health, treatment resistance, and noncompliance. Therefore, the Measure A Serenity House Construction Resolution Agenda Item Number 60 should be removed from the consent agenda unless you believe the voters will approve Measure K, even if several Measure A programs are failures. Thank you.
We have no more public comment.
I'm going to move now to the action to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda items. Do we have a motion?
I move to set the agenda and approve consent items.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Now, moving on to presentations and awards, and the first one is to honor our Employee of the Month, Mr. Malpian.
Mr. President, members of the board, it's a pleasure to introduce to you and our audience our Employee of the Month for September 2016, Michelle Marola. Michelle, would you please stand?
Michelle is a charge nurse at the San Mateo Medical Center. She has been working for the county for just over two years in the surgical specialty clinics. Michelle is described as someone who is an excellent role model for nurses in her unit. She provides encouragement, coaching, and mentoring. She always ensures quality care and excellent customer service. Last year, Michelle was nominated twice for Excellence Awards in Nursing at the Medical Center and also has received numerous Bravo Awards. Michelle never hesitates to help her staff and colleagues wherever and however she can. Her compassion for people and her passion for her profession is clear in her everyday work. This was demonstrated a few weeks ago at the Hillsdale Shopping Center when Michelle was leaving the center and she pulled onto Hillsdale Boulevard and spotted a man laying face down on the sidewalk at the bus stop. Michelle pulled her car to the side and put on her emergency blinkers and approached the man. It was clear that the man was in distress, and after ensuring that 911 had been called, she began chest compressions and continued to do so until the EMT had arrived. Michelle helped the EMT get the gentleman loaded into the ambulance, whereupon he was taken to the medical center. I'm pleased to report that because of Michelle's actions, this gentleman is doing fine today. And this is certainly an example of how, using her training, her professional skill, and her commitment to the health and safety of everyone in our community, that Michelle is an outstanding member of the community and one of the many outstanding employees of San Mateo County. Our first speaker this morning is Linda Ellington from Emergency Medical Services.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Linda Ellington, Clinical Nurse Manager for the EMS Division. And on behalf of the EMS Agency, I'd like to say congratulations to Michelle. Her quick-acting interventions in performing bystander CPR helped save a life, and it's such an honor to meet the patient this morning. Michelle provided a very important link in what the American Heart Association calls "The Chain of Survival." It starts with somebody calling 911, and our staff member from EMS, Kevin Rose, was on site, and he actually called 911. And then Michelle quickly started hands-only bystander CPR, which was very effective until the fire department and the ambulance arrived. And once they got there, she worked seamlessly with them. It was like they'd been training together all along, and the patient was transported to the hospital. So effective bystander CPR like Michelle did can actually double the patient's chance of survival. And the EMS Agency has made high-performance CPR a priority, and so our EMS responders, first responders, have been doing CPR for years. But now we have a choreographed defined role where everyone has their spot, and again, Michelle fit in perfectly with that. So what we'd like to see is we'd like to see everybody learn CPR, because you never know when you're going to be and have the opportunity to make a difference, just like Michelle did. So thank you.[503.72][503.72](applause).
Our final speaker this morning is Joan Spicer, Deputy Director of Inpatient Services.
Good morning. I'm fortunate to be able to experience and watch Michelle in action in the Medical Center. I have seen her react when patients have had unexpected changes in clinical status, and I've seen her leadership in our disaster response. Michelle, as a nurse, represents the largest segment of the healthcare workforce, nurses, not only here in the United States but around the world. In the United States, nurses are close to 4 million strong. No wonder, knowing Michelle, why each year the Gallup polls ranks nurses as the most trusted professionals. Not only are nurses the most trusted professionals, but they are known as a doing profession because nurses just get it done. Save a life on the way home from work? Nurse Michelle just gets it done.[566.29][566.29](laughter). As a Chief Nursing Officer at San Mateo Medical Center, Michelle, thank you for all you do for our patients. As a resident of San Mateo County, Michelle, thank you for all you do for our residents. As a nurse myself for over 46 years and your colleague, Michelle, thank you for your exemplary representation of our profession. Being a nurse is truly a 24/7 commitment. My kind regards, Michelle.[591.45][591.45](applause).
Before we move on to the presentation of Michelle's commendation and the very large check and the very nice gift, I understand that the fellow, the man that she saved is here somewhere in the audience.
Very good.
This is the gentleman that Michelle saved, and (applause), I don't want to put you on the spot or anything, but I will.[629.41][629.41](laughter) Maybe you'd like to say a few words.
So, yeah, so I'm Jeff Craighead. I think most of you know me. I'm a local realtor, and I had dropped my car off, and the last thing I remembered was seeing Wells Fargo's bank. And like they say, the first thing that, the first notification that you have a heart attack or a heart problem is you're dead. Well, thanks to Michelle, I'm not. Of course, I was totally unconscious, but everybody has come around to me and to tell me what a great job that she's done. If it wasn't for her, I certainly wouldn't be here today because of her prompt action. There's no damage to my heart. There's no more damage to my brain than what I already did.[677.19][677.19](laughter). But the, you know, I know CPR. I'm a rescue diver. And, you know, they've changed things up now where you have to have bigger, stronger compressions. You have to compress at least an inch. I recovered with everything except for my chest pain from CPR.[697.56][697.56](laughter) That Michelle did. But, I mean, what a great lady and my guardian angel. Thank you very much for awarding her.[708.56][708.56](applause).
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate that, and it's good to see you.
Good to see you guys.
Thank you. Okay, now, I think we should all go down and present Michelle with these gifts, and I'll give one.
So obviously, I'm very honored and humbled to be recognized and presented with this commendation. I feel strongly that any of the amazing, incredible nurses and doctors that I work with at San Mateo Medical Center would have done the same thing. Every day, I'm amazed at the constant acts of sincere kindness and empathy and caring that I see from my coworkers towards our patients and their families. It's really been a true joy in the short time that I've worked at the Medical Center to experience that from all of my coworkers. I have to give my sincerest thanks to my team, Yvonne, my manager, and Margarita, my mentor, for supporting me and giving me the guidance that I've needed in the last two years to become the nurse that I've become. And thank you so, so very much for this commendation from the supervisor and county manager, Mr. Malpian, and Mr. Byers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before we make a motion to approve (laugh) the honor of Employee of the Month, let me just do a little puff piece here, that my first job in government was actually in EMS. And I remember, I still remember, even though it's been quite some time, the data about heart attacks and saving victims and just everything that you did and that the entire EMS team here in the county does is sincerely appreciated. I know sometimes it's tough, but Craig is the proof that it really does work and pay off. So thank you. So if we could have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Now we'll move to a presentation of a proclamation designating September 2016 as Recovery Happens Recovery Happens Month Supervisor Dave Pine.
Thank you, President Slocum. First, let me start by making a motion to approve September 2016 as Recovery Month in San Mateo County.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, this is the 27th year that the county has called attention to Recovery Month, when we celebrate those individuals in our county who have reclaimed their lives by recovering from substance abuse and mental health issues, and also honor, we honor all the great providers that make recovery possible. So the aim of Recovery Month is to bring awareness to the fact that individuals with substance abuse and mental health challenges can recover with appropriate treatment and support and lead very productive lives and be very active members of our community. The theme of this year's Recovery Month is "Join the Voices for Recovery: Our Families, Our Stories, Our Recovery." We want to highlight the value of peer support and encourage everyone to spread the word that preventing and treating mental health and substance abuse issues is important, and there should not be any stigma concerning it. I know in my own experiences with some of the many great community providers, the peer support is just so essential. I've, you know, seen this in Clubhouse, NAMI, Voices of Recovery, and it's a key, key part of the recovery process. And also, we are just so fortunate to have a terrific Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Department and many, many dedicated community-based organizations that make this work so successful. So this is always a commendation we look forward to because each year we hear some pretty compelling stories from individuals in our community. So I would like to welcome Stephen Kaplan, the Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, Barbara Correa, Clinical Supervisor, El Centro de Libertad, and Laura Moore, Family Member of a Person in Recovery, and Melissa Greenfield.
Mr. Cap? Take it away. Take it away. All right. Good morning, board. Members, members, byers. So here we are again. September seems to roll around pretty quickly, and I appreciate the board's taking the time every year to recognize Recovery Happens Month. And I just want to ask everybody in the audience who's here supporting Recovery Happens Month to stand up. Thank you. The reason I did that is to make sure the board really recognizes how much you're supported by the community and all that you do to support the work that happens every day in this county to help people in their recovery from substance use and mental health issues. We had a great kickoff this morning at 7:30 at our Bridges Program to kick off a month of many great activities, and I hope you'll find the time to join us for some of those. I don't have them all down by memory, but the one that I do know is on September 20th at Central Park in San Mateo is our picnic, and I hope you can come over and spend a few minutes in fellowship with all that attends. We usually have several hundred people there. Before introducing the speakers, I just want to commend a couple people. This morning Judge Livermore was at the breakfast, which he's there every year, and Judge Livermore is retiring soon, and I want to recognize the great work that he's done, not only in his courtroom to support people in recovery, but to help our county in general elevate their concern for people in recovery and step up and do something to support. The good news was, we heard that he'll continue in his retirement to run Drug Court, so we were all very pleased to know that. The second person I want to recognize is Supervisor Tissier. This being her last September Recovery Happens Month as a board member. And Supervisor Tissier in general is so supportive of all that we do at Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, by extension to our community providers, but in particular, she's been a champion for providing services to people that find themselves in the criminal justice system, and even more particular for women in the criminal justice system. And I came to this county just after you were elected, and it's been really a great privilege to watch what you've done over your 12 years in office to elevate what we do. And all of these, many of these people that I had stand up are here because of the work that you've done. So I really appreciate your champion, the work that we need to do. Thank you very much. So I have a few speakers that I wanted to show up here, and it'll be brief, Mr. Malpian. It'll be brief.[1262.08][1262.08](laughter). So we got the message. So anyways, we have a few here. The first is Barbara Correa from El Centro.
Thank you for having us here. I was asked to come here to share a few words, and two of the most important words that I was asked to share is, "Thank you. Thank you for your support. It allows recovery to happen in this community." I only have three minutes, so I want to share with you four stories, four very brief stories. And the first one is, I will call him Bob, and he was a meth addict, and he came into our program. And he was angry and afraid, as most people who suffer from substance abuse are. And he came in and through the process of recovery, through breaking through denial, through creating a vision for his life that did not include, it did not have to include, substance use. He came in with shame and despair. His life was in disrepair, and he graduated from our program feeling proud of his accomplishments, recognizing he did have a different vision for his life, and is, as we speak, becoming a productive and happy individual in this community. The second story is about this young woman who came into our program. She is pregnant, and she is determined to have a different experience than she experienced in her family. She came from a family where there was generations of substance abuse, and she was offered drugs by her mother at a very early age. And so we're looking at generations of familial substance abuse that has to be intervened upon, and your support helps us do that. The third story is about children. We have a little kiddie corner in our sitting area, and children come and play and have fun and read while their parents are in session with our counselors. We are an outpatient drug and alcohol program that not only works with clients, but we also work with families. We are a family-centered program. So the children are there playing, and one morning I saw these children while their mother was in session, and it stopped me in my tracks. It struck me that this is the future generations, the opportunity for children to grow up and become happy, joyful, productive, healthy adults who can live a life without resorting to drugs and alcohol to assuage their pain and their suffering. So these are the next generations that are coming up, and it's full of hope. And the last story that I want to share with you, as I said, we work with families, and every month we have one evening that is devoted to clients and their families coming together and having fun. It's called Family Fun Night. And just lest you think that your support is being frittered away, a lot of things happen in that meeting. We have dinner, and we play. We play games. We sing. We drum. We do art. Their artwork is all over our walls. We play music, and something very deep and important and meaningful is happening while they're doing that. They are creating community. They're creating community of healthy, vibrant, sober friends, and they're developing healthy relationships, and so they're developing community. So here we are. We have the individual who comes in broken and who leaves whole. We have a pregnant woman who wants to do it differently than the generations of her family have done. We have children who are the promise of our future without drugs and alcohol and the destruction that they bring. And then we have families coming together and developing a community. And if we sort of expand this little microcosm of families coming together and expand that to multiple families in our county, then we have a vibrant, healthy county, and you provide that support for us. And so, in summary, your support allows the individual to reclaim his or her life and to lead a life of joy. Your support provides the intervention of generations of familial substance abuse. Your support paves the way for the next generations to lead their lives and break the cycle of substance abuse. And finally, your support helps rebuild this community in vital ways. And so, again, as a representative of El Centro de Libertad, the Freedom Center, we want to thank you. Thank you so much.[1613.11][1613.11](applause).
So our next speaker will be Laura Moore.
I recognize Carol. My name is Laura Moore. I grew up in the foster care system in San Francisco from the age of three to the age of 18 and a half. I started drinking when I was eight and started smoking weed to deal with the abuse that was going on in my foster home. My children, we suffer, we also suffer from some side of mental health issues. My children started, I guess, my legacy of drinking and smoking to, so that they could cope with their mental health issues as well as life. I'm here to say thank you very much because the support of San Mateo Behavioral Health has been a support to my family. I started first when I was forced into services when my children were, when my children were taken into CPS. I started to go to my meetings, go to the support with mental health, and as time went on, I realized that they were really helping my children. They started to, they were in gangs. They were all on probation, each one of them, but they all actually turned around. They started going to school. They graduated from colleges, San Francisco, one of them graduated from San Francisco State. And I believe it all had to do with the support of all the different organizations that have, nonprofits that have been, that you guys have collaborated with. And I'm just here to say that, you know, it really does work. You know, the doctors that I've had have been supportive to me. You know, the system isn't pure and correct, but it's really helped me and my family. I mean, I wouldn't be here today, you know? I mean, I was always told, "You'll never live to be 13, 17, 18, 19." I go, "No, I'm here, I'm 50." But I just want you guys to know what appreciation I have for me and my children because you guys supported us in every kind of way, you know? And they're still getting services. They still struggle each day with their, one with substance abuse still, the other three, they don't do anything anymore. They're working. And so I just want to tell you how appreciative, you know, you guys helped me, and I still have support, Carol over there. I just really want you guys to know how much I appreciate, and it does work. My daughter did go to El Centro, and so, and then there's the Clubhouse, and there's NAMI. So I just want you guys to know, you guys are doing a great job, and I've never done a speech before.[1773.01][1773.01](laughter) Thank you very much.[1775.01][1775.01](applause).
And our final speaker to share is Melissa Greenfield.
Hi, good morning, everybody. I thought I had one more speaker. I was kicking back at my chair thinking I wasn't up yet. My name is Melissa- Thank you for your work. My recovery started about two, a little over two years ago, and I went to Maple Street Shelter. And even though I was there for three days, I felt comfortable and safe there. Then I entered into Hope House, which is under Service League and Karen Francone, and the services, I would love to go through all the services they provided, but only have two minutes. So I'll tell you that the recovery they provided was, was holistic. It was mind, body, heart, and spirit. I'm recovering from drug addiction, as well as domestic violence and food addiction. In my domestic violence, I was, I was torn down so far, I was just doing drugs, waiting to die. It was a horrible existence. I was homeless, and I'm just very grateful to be here today. I'm restored, I have restored relationships with my family, my grandkids, and, and that's just awesome on that front. One of the groups I was introduced to and attended in Hope House was through Voices of Recovery San Mateo County and RAP, Homeless Recovery Action Plan, and they're a peer-to-peer organization. Through that, I learned that I am the expert on myself, not a doctor, not anybody with a degree, just because they have one. I'm the expert, and I know what my wellness is. I was, I learned how to regain my wellness and how to retain it. When I completed Hope House, I was hired by Voices of Recovery San Mateo County, and I'm now a RAP facilitator, and I get to go back into Hope House and show the women there that work, recovery does work, that you can also have these tools to retain and regain your wellness. The scared factor's starting to kick in. Today, I'm living at Transitional House, at, at Hope House, and I've been there for 18 months, which is just about the limit. After that, you have to ask for an extension. However, I haven't needed to. Because of Alcohol and Other Drugs Organization, I was referred for a housing voucher and would have the opportunity to have one. So on October 1st, I'll be moving out of Transitional and into the real world, and I'm now a contributing member of society. I pay my bills, I have a savings account, I regained my driver's license, I have a car, and my future just keeps looking brighter every day. So thank you.
So just in closure, again, I want to thank the board and the county manager, Louise Rogers, and all the county folks who support us. The three speakers really are a microcosm of many other people that represent each, that they have represented today. And by extension, there are just thousands of people in this community working at this every single day. So I have a feeling when you finish this agenda, lots of people are going to leave. Don't take offense that it has anything to do with how important the rest of your agenda is. It's just there's stuff to do outside in the, in the outside area, and I hope you visit some of the tables and providers when you recess today. They'll really appreciate you showing up. So thank you.
We do have a proclamation.
Oh, you have, oh, of course, yeah. Proclamation. So where the speakers should come up to, the three folks.
Where, where are the other two ladies? Barbara? Barbara, leave.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing those, the three speakers. Really moving stories. Thank you for sharing that. We do have one speaker on this item, but I'm going to ask Mr. Fox to yield the floor and allow us to move on, if that would be okay. And we'll move on to item number three, which is the presentation of a proclamation designating September 22nd as National Fall Prevention Day. Supervisor Tessier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to once again bring to our attention the important issue of fall prevention. About one out of every three adults aged 65 and older fall each year. In fact, falls are the leading cause of fatal and non-fatal injuries for this age group. It's also important to understand that in most cases, falls are preventable and can be reduced by evidence-based practices, like regular exercise to improve balance, strength, and mobility, annual vision exams, having a medication review by a physician or pharmacist, along with simple home improvements for a safer environment. In fact, the California Department of Health awarded a grant to the Health Systems EMS Injury Prevention Program to implement the Stepping On Program to empower older adults to carry out healthy behaviors. Our Board of Supervisors also recognized the significance of preventing older adult falls and awarded Measure A funds to support the Stepping On course. To date, four courses have been completed and have exceeded the expected performance objective of 90% registration and 80% course completion. I want to recognize the Fall Prevention Coalition of San Mateo County in helping make this program successful by its public outreach efforts and by advocating on behalf of older adults. Today, we have Patrice Christensen, the Public Health Nurse with EMS, and the Chair of the Coalition is here to accept this proclamation and say a few words. So I'd like to make a motion to proclaim September 22nd, 2016, as National Fall Prevention Awareness Day at San Mateo County.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
And if Patrice could come forward. Let me present this to you.
Thank you, Supervisor Tessier, and the rest of the board, County Manager Malpe, and Mr. Byers. Once again, we are so grateful for all of your support in bringing attention during the month of September and throughout the year, the importance of older adult falls. As you all know, the silver tsunami is rapidly approaching, and those of us who are baby boomers are reaching that golden age of 65, where our risk of falls increases. It is so important that this become on everybody's radar on how significant older adults' falls are. It's not just a healthcare issue, it's a social issue, it's an economic issue. Of those older adults who fall, if we do not intervene to figure out why they fall, fell in the first place, 50% of them are going to fall again within that year. We are very pleased to be presenting the Stepping On Program, which Measure A funds have helped support. This is an evidence-based program that shows that its participants who completed the seven-week program had a 31% reduction in their fall risks. The Fall Prevention Coalition of San Mateo County, formerly known as the San Mateo County Task Force, is really pleased that we are able to do this project in cooperation with the San Mateo County Health Department and the Hospital Consortium of San Mateo. Another project that we're really looking forward to this year is that we all know that from, from previous surveys, that our older adults look towards their healthcare practitioner for answers to questions. And so we're working with healthcare providers throughout San Mateo County to implement a program that the CDC has started, which is called STEADY. And this program is, starts off with a self-assessment by the older adults, and I'll leave you some brochures here, to see if they are at risk. And we're encouraging healthcare practitioners to get a baseline, starting at 65, and then every year thereafter, talking about falls. It doesn't always happen at 65, but it's a good point to start the discussion. So thank you very much for your ongoing support of this project.
Thank you. And I also want to do a shout-out to Francine Sarafin-Dixon for the Hospital Consortium. I just saw you hiding back there. Thank you for all your help with this as well.
Are you, are you going to pass out those brochures? I, I need one. Thank you. Now we're going to move on to item number four, which is the presentation of a resolution in support of House Joint Resolution 47 to a step, thank you, to establish a Presidential Youth Commission. And before we go any further, let me just make a motion to have this board approve our resolution in support of House Joint Resolution 47, which attempts to establish a Presidential Youth Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There are about 104 million youth in America, and as we all know, in terms of voting and in every other way, they're largely underrepresented. It's important, therefore, that we lend our support to this House Joint Resolution, which, as I said, would establish a Presidential Commission for Youth. And let me just thank the San Mateo County Youth Commission, and it's, all of its work, not just on this joint resolution, but in all their work all year long. It's pretty, it's a very amazing group, and if you've never had a chance to listen to those young people speak and deliberate, I would encourage you to do so. The way this came about, this, this resolution before us today, was that a high school, a high school junior, I think, junior from San Mateo County reached out and asked if we would support this joint resolution, which, of course, I know we're all proud to do. So I want to recognize Annie Liu, who is here this morning, and she's the young person from the Youth Commission that brought this resolution forward. And Annie, maybe you'd like to come up and say a few words, and then I'll present this resolution to you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much, President Slocum, and County Manager Malpe, and County Council Byers. My name is Annie. I'm currently a junior at Mills High School, and I sit on the Executive Committee for, Executive Board for the San Mateo County Youth Commission as the Chair of the Adolescent Needs Committee. And I'm currently the District Director for the Congressional District 14 of the Presidential Youth Council, Campaign for the Presidential Youth Council. And so basically, this is a youth-led nationwide movement that advocates the passing of House Joint Resolution 47, as President Slocum mentioned earlier. And basically, we want to give youth a voice and kind of bridge the divide between youth and government, because especially right now, the government officials are making decisions that will impact our future, and so we should have a voice in, have a voice in policymaking. And so it's really important to, as my experience on the Youth Commission, we are powerful, we can do a lot of change in the society. And I kind of want to take this experience on a county level and try to make it into a national level. And so this would create a council of 24 youth from age 16 to 24. It's bipartisan, so it bridges the political divide in America. It represents the diversity of America, and it will advise the President in policymaking. So as the Youth Commission right now for San Mateo County kind of advises the Board of Supervisors, this Youth Council would advise the President. And it's really vital for, to create this, because youth would then have a platform to be able to speak up and to make a difference in the nation and the world. And so your support is so vital for us today, because in order to get this passed in the House of Representatives in the U.S. Congress, we need support locally. And so I'm so thankful and honored to be able to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Give it up for Annie.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Keep us posted?
Yes.
Progress?
Thank you.
No, Annie, if you have to excuse yourself because you need to get back to school, it's quite all right.
I'm, I'm going to stay here.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right. So now we're going to move to our nine o'clock item, which is a presentation regarding high-speed rail, and I think Mr. Porter is going to kick this off for us. Thank you.
Thank you, President Slocum, members of the board, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers. It is my pleasure to present to representatives from the California High-Speed Rail Authority, Mr. Ben Triposis, I hope I got that right, and Ms. Morgan Gally. And they, they'll be providing a presentation and an update on high-speed rail as the progress is progressing in California and specifically in the Bay Area. So I'll turn it over to, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter, President Slocum, board members, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you this morning, and I do want to just provide a brief overview of where we are with the California High-Speed Rail Project in the Peninsula Corridor and the Bay Area more broadly. I'm the Northern California Regional Director for the High-Speed Rail Authority. I manage the development of the program from the Transbay Terminal in San Francisco, south to Gilroy, east to Merced, and eventually north to Sacramento. We are in the midst of environmentally clearing the Bay Area Project Sections as directed by the 2016 Business Plan. The adopted Business Plan has led to connecting the Bay Area Project Sections from San Francisco to San Jose and San Jose to Merced with the work that is currently underway in the Central Valley from Merced to Bakersfield. There is over $119 million worth, forgive me, 119 miles worth of construction, roughly over $3 billion worth of both federal and state investment in the construction that is underway in the Central Valley. And we're working hard to environmentally clear the Bay Area Project Sections to connect to the work underway in the Central Valley, to begin revenue service from San Francisco to Bakersfield by 2025. That's the directive of the 2016 Business Plan. We, on the Peninsula, importantly, we are making, moving toward making and making currently significant investments. We have just gone to our board and adopted our funding plan, committing $600 million in Proposition 1A funds and an additional $113 million in state funds to the Caltrain Electrification Program that I know Board Member Tessier is intimately familiar with, but that we very happily are, have completed an MOU and a funding agreement with Caltrain to move the electrification project forward. And Caltrain is moving toward approving their design build, in fact, have acted to approve the design-build program, as well as the procurement of their electrified vehicles to deliver electrified Caltrain commuter service between San Francisco and San Jose by 2020, 2021. And we, the state of California, through the authority, has helped fund a significant portion of that program. In addition, because of the, the configuration of the Peninsula Corridor, one of the central concerns certainly is safety in the Peninsula Corridor, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, but grade crossings across the Caltrain Corridor between San Francisco and San Jose are a central concern and a primary interest for all the communities in the Peninsula Corridor. And we've been working very closely with one of those communities, the City of San Mateo, who has led the way on developing grade separation projects at 25th Avenue, 28th Avenue, and 31st Avenue. 25th Avenue, in fact, is in the top 10 of those crossings identified by the Public Utilities Commission from a statewide perspective for grade crossing separation to improve safety at that location. So we've partnered with the City of San Mateo, who has committed their funds, the San Mateo County Transportation Authority has also committed significant funds, and the authority has now moved to commit $84 million toward what is a $180 million grade separation project, improving the safety at those three crossings by completing grade separations at that location. I just want to acknowledge Larry Patterson, the City Manager of San Mateo, and Brad Underwood, their Public Works Director, who have done yeoman's work in moving these projects forward. and the Authority has now moved to commit $84 million toward what is a $180 million grade separation project, improving the safety at those three crossings by completing grade separations at that location. I just want to acknowledge Larry Patterson, the City Manager of San Mateo, and Brad Underwood, their Public Works Director, who have done yeoman's work in moving these projects forward. Again, high-speed rail is happening. We have regular construction updates on our website that I invite you to see. There's also significant video footage of the construction that is currently underway in Central-- in the Central Valley, giving a very clear understanding to the level of momentum that the project has moving forward. Specific to the Peninsula Corridor, we are in the midst, as I mentioned, of environmentally clearing the project sections from San Francisco to San Jose and San Jose to Merced. The team of HNTB, along with a host of subconsultants, are working on both project sections. There will be two environmental documents that is-- will be completed by the HNTB team. In the Peninsula Corridor, the 51-mile corridor that will be environmentally cleared for blended service, that's the direction that the region has taken by legislation, where future electrified Caltrain commuter service will be joined eventually by future high-speed rail service within the confines of the existing right-of-way in the Peninsula Corridor. So, high-speed trains and Caltrain commuter trains will be operating on the same rail in the same corridor. And it is less about commuter versus high-speed than it is about capacity in the corridor, increasing what is already an oversubscribed corridor, roughly 62,000 passengers a day on our way to over 100,000 passengers a day on Caltrain, to increase the number of trains that operate in the corridor, to take some of the congestion off of 101 and create opportunities for people to travel between San Francisco and San Jose, and certainly, all of the employment centers in this area in particular. So, as I said, the Peninsula alignment is defined by legislation. We'll be completing a blended service corridor, 30-minute high-speed travel between San Francisco and San Jose. We will operate up to six Caltrain commuter trains and up to four high-speed trains per hour per direction once the blended service is completed. We are looking at some of the components of the environmental review that we're looking at. Include a potential light maintenance facility in Brisbane, some potential passing tracks along the Peninsula, including a two-mile corridor in San Mateo where those grade crossings will be completed. Some of the other communities that we are working with throughout the corridor that we want to partner with through this process as the blended service is being developed include all of the Peninsula cities. We have-- here you see some options for the Brisbane Maintenance Facility. There is both an east side and a west side option that we're considering. We're working with the City of Brisbane, as well as the property owner, who has considered modifying the land use in the Brisbane location to identify a footprint that works both for the potential facility, as well as future development of the remaining parcels that work for the city and the property owner in an ongoing way. I mentioned potential locations for passing tracks. Some of the locations that we're looking at include that San Mateo section, as well as two other options that you see depicted here, roughly between the Hillsdale Station and just north of where we are, just north of Redwood City, to accommodate the operation of higher-speed trains in the corridor. While all the trains, both commuter and high-speed, in a blended configuration will be able to operate at up to 110 miles an hour, there will still be significant local commuter traffic stopping at all of the existing Caltrain stations. So, in order to accommodate faster trains moving around those regular stop trains, we need passing tracks to make sure that the system can function effectively. A central component of the investment in the Peninsula Corridor insofar as blended rail service is concerned is a focus on safety, and we will be partnering with Caltrain as they move forward with their design-build for electrification. And as we follow on with the development of those components for high-speed service in the corridor, we'll be focusing on completing the fencing program that Caltrain has initiated along the entirety of the corridor to really limit pedestrian access along the corridor, so improving fencing throughout. And then, looking at options like those depicted here, which include the installation of four quadrant gates, that is, two gates on either side of a rail crossing to further limit the ability of vehicles to go around-- gates at crossings and impede on a crossing. We'll also be investigating intrusion protection technologies that are-- that include both video surveillance, as well as track sensors, to ensure that we're keeping folks out of the rail right-of-way to as great an extent as possible, improving the overall safety of the corridor from San Francisco to San Jose. The schedule that we have for completing the environmental review is depicted here. We've gone through a scoping process-- corridor, going from what had been identified as a separate high-speed and Caltrain corridor to now a blended service. So, we went through a very thorough scoping process, reaching out to local stakeholders and communities to get their input on this blended configuration that we're moving forward with. We're in the midst of technical analysis and completing station footprints. We have done significant outreach and will continue to do outreach. Ms. Gally is our outreach manager, and Morgan is leading the charge on reaching out to local stakeholders and all of the communities in the Peninsula Corridor to ensure that we're getting meaningful input and participation in the development of the project as we move forward. We will move toward a preliminary preferred alternative, which is really a distillation of the input that we've gotten to date, and that'll be in the fall of this year, actually. We're looking in the November timeframe for that, moving toward a draft document early next year and a final environmental document by December of 2017. Some of the input that we received through our scoping process you see depicted here, concerns run the usual gamut around infrastructure projects, including noise and potential vibrations affecting local communities, increased traffic, dividing communities in any way as a result of increased rail service rights of way, existing relationships with other agencies like Union Pacific and, of course, Caltrain, the Altamont Corridor Express and Capitals, who operate at the southern portion of the right-of-way between San Francisco and San Jose, and, of course, project cost and funding. Some of the priorities that have come forward through the community working groups here in San Mateo County are shown here, improvements to safety, as I mentioned, mobility, ensuring mobility for that traffic through those grade crossings, mitigating climate change. Certainly, the Caltrain project will go a long way to lead the charge on greenhouse gas emission reduction by electrifying the Peninsula Corridor, and then our follow-on high-speed will operate in that electrified corridor. Traffic impacts, again, are very important. Noise reduction, which, again, electrified train service will be significantly quieter than existing diesel in the corridor, so that'll be a significant improvement along the Peninsula Corridor. And then, overall neighborhood health and stability is vital, which is why it's so important for us to ensure that we're getting meaningful public input from the local communities. From an outreach standpoint, as I said, Morgan is leading the charge on our outreach efforts, and here are just some of the ways that we are engaged with the local community. Scoping meetings, ongoing community working group meetings, which you see some of the groups that are represented on our community working groups shown here, entities like the Millbrae Chamber, Redwood City Chamber, the San Mateo County Labor Council, Samaritan House, Legal Aid Society, to name a few. You see the list here, but we've tried very hard to get recommendations from the community and from stakeholders for those public entities and stakeholders that would want to participate and give input to this process. So, we make sure that we're getting a broad cross-section of input as we move the program forward. And you also see some of the folks that we received scoping comments from, and we'll be moving to release a scoping report from that scoping exercise by the end of this month. An important item that you'll see here that you-- we will likely come back to you with in the coming weeks is the third-party reimbursement agreement. We are engaging with all of the communities and public agencies in the corridor in developing third-party agreements that can accommodate your staff time and resources on any effort that your staff makes on behalf of the development of the high-speed rail project, so to ensure that you are kept whole and that your staff's time and energy in working on the high-speed rail project are appropriately compensated and that they can participate meaningfully in the engagement-- or rather, the development of the project. So, we're developing reimbursement agreements with all of the public agencies along the corridor, and we'll be coming back to you to complete that agreement. Mr. Porter is engaged in that process, and we'll be working together to ensure that we come back and answer any questions that you have related to the specific agreement itself. Environmental justice is always also a very important component of the environmental effort. Certainly, in the San Mateo community, the North Fair Oaks Community Council has been engaged, and we've initiated environmental justice-related outreach to North Fair Oaks, among many other communities. There will be ongoing outreach and conversation with these communities as a component of the environmental review to ensure that environmental justice communities aren't unduly impacted by any of the improvements that we're recommending in the Peninsula Corridor. Upcoming outreach activities include another round of community working groups in October, as well as another series of open houses, public open houses, in October as well. Ongoing activities include utilizing the Caltrain Local Policymaker Group to provide regular updates on the progress of the high-speed rail program. We host those local policymaker meetings that are organized by Caltrain and chaired by Board Member Tissier. Every other month, one month, it's-- the conversation is devoted to the Caltrain Modernization Program, and on alternate months, it will be the High-Speed Rail Project. We'll do that in an ongoing way as long as we're moving through the process. The environmental justice events, you will also be hearing about Permission to Enter Outreach. There are selected properties along the corridor where, as a component of our environmental review, we have to do some surveying, no physical intrusion, no drilling or digging or other impacts in the corridor, but just a survey of a particular site as a component of our environmental review. Property owners have received letters, and we'll be receiving letters, and we'll be reaching out to those property owners. It's strictly voluntary, but if there are any questions that come to your respective offices regarding the Permission to Enter process, we're always available and happy to answer any questions and work with the specific property owner on any concerns that they may have related to the Permit to Enter process. And then, finally, we're working on significant station planning around areas like the Millbrae SFO Station in bringing in future high-speed service, ensuring that it's coordinated with existing development plans and working with the existing services that are already operating there, like Caltrain and BART. That's my very brief overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate the information. Board member comments and questions? Supervisor Pye?
I just have one question about the future of grade separations. So, as I understand it, the high-speed rail trains would travel-- did I hear you say 110 miles an hour actually on the Peninsula itself?
That's correct. Up to 110 miles an hour.
And I think you said to be up to 10, 10 trains an hour.
Commuter and high-speed.
Right, right. Yeah, so with those two factors, grade separations, I think, are going to be critical for the Peninsula. And obviously, they cost a lot of money. It's fantastic that you're able to help the City of San Mateo. So, could you comment more on whether other funding will be available from HSR for grade separations, or kind of what the-- what your perspective is on more grade separations?
I'd be happy to, Supervisor Pye, and thank you for asking that. I should have mentioned that as a component of my presentation. But what we are doing, because of the volume of grade crossings between San Francisco and San Jose, and really, San Francisco and Gilroy, there are all over 60 crossings in that stretch, arguably, the most concentrated number of crossings in an active railroad of anywhere in the Bay Area. And because of that, we've reached out to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission to get their participation on an analysis of the corridor, to take a more comprehensive look at the grade separation, trying to identify the relative priorities in terms of traffic volumes and potential impacts of each of those crossings, and get a better sense both of where the needs are and what those funding levels are. In very broad-brush terms, grade crossings can begin in the $150 million range. And if we assume that for just the 42 crossings in the Peninsula, you're looking at a $3 to $5 billion challenge. So, given the size of that challenge and the fact that even if we had all the funds to build those crossings today, you're looking at an iterative project construction program of 10 or 20 years. So, trying to identify those priorities from a regional standpoint and make strategic investments, working as much as possible with the local communities in the same way that we did with San Mateo, where the local community comes forward with their priorities. Other communities in the corridor, like Burlingame, is moving forward with their Broadway Crossing. In Santa Clara County, Mountain View is looking at Rengsdorf, and they've even taken action at the local level to close the Castro Street Crossing and make it a much more pedestrian-oriented facility. So, trying to find those opportunities along the corridor as much as possible. Obviously, the safest, most efficiently operating corridor is one that's completely grade-separated and closed off from pedestrian access. In general, the Federal Rail Administration allows for the operation of trains up to 125 miles an hour before they require grade separating a crossing. So, we have a little leeway from an operating standpoint. But our primary interest, as I mentioned, is to ensure that we are making the corridor safer sooner, as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Supervisor Tissier?
No, I've seen this presentation.
Have you?
My apologies.
Just kidding.
Supervisor Grue? Supervisor Horstler?
Just one question, and you showed that Brisbane is a site for, I guess, your rail yard. But I thought that-- I mean, I don't think Brisbane thinks that, and I know the property owner doesn't think that as well. But I think the other alternative was Gilroy, if I'm not mistaken?
That's correct, and we're still investigating Gilroy as well. Obviously, there are operational challenges if you have-- if your only maintenance facility is that far south in terms of moving your trains on a regular basis. There are challenges associated with that, but we are still looking at both, Supervisor.
And just one final other comment. I just don't see how you can go 110 miles an hour without grade crossings, especially like in Burlingame. That's-- you're going to end up having a lot of fencing. It's kind of hard to imagine that you can get that kind of speed, but good luck.
Thank you. I get that a lot. I had two questions. I wasn't quite clear on page-- well, the pages aren't numbered, but is there a station proposed for the North Fair Oaks community?
No, there is not. The stations that we're looking at for analysis-- and forgive me for not being clear on that, President Slocum-- we will-- we are looking at stations, obviously, the Transbay Terminal in San Francisco, once the system connects to it through the downtown extension, the Fourth and King Street Station that currently operates in San Francisco, the Millbrae SFO Station, and the San Jose Deardon Station are the stations that will be operational by 2025 for the Peninsula Service, the Peninsula Corridor.
Thank you. Just one other matter of curiosity, more than anything else, and it has to do with legal challenges on the Peninsula. Have there been any? I think I've read a couple of newspaper accounts.
There have been. Those have been overcome to this point. The City of Atherton currently has a challenge to the Caltrain Electrification Environmental Document, but that's separate from the effort that we have going forward.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you both for coming today--
Thank you for having us.
--and sharing all this information. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our other nine o'clock matter, item number six, which is a presentation by County Council and conducting a public hearing under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act regarding the issuance by the California Municipal Finance Authority of revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $9 million.
Thank you, President Slocum, members of the Board. The Board receives occasional requests, although it seems like we've been receiving more lately, to hold what's known as a TEFFRA hearing. A TEFFRA hearing is required so that bonds can be issued in favor of a particular development that is for community benefit. The County of San Mateo, as a member of the California Municipal Finance Authority, is required to hold a hearing for a qualified project that is cited in our unincorporated jurisdiction. Here, the-- and the Board certainly knows the drill here, having been through this several times-- here, the-- times, here, the Mental Health Association of California would be a borrower, and has requested that the California Municipal Finance Authority be the issuer of $9 million in bonds to develop a 16-unit affordable housing project at 105 Fifth Avenue in Redwood City. The project is otherwise known as Waverly Place. As the board is certainly aware, the county doesn't have any, we don't issue the bonds, we really have no responsibility for the bonds, we are simply a vehicle for the hearing to give the public an opportunity to appear either in favor or opposed, or otherwise to comment. So, that is our only role, is to be a vehicle for the hearing. So, with that, I would suggest that we make a motion to open the public hearing, unless the board has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Byers.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
Second? Any second?
Second.
All those in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is now open. Are there public speaker cards?
I have no public speaker cards.
No speaker cards.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
I'll move to adopt the resolution approving the issuance by the California Municipal Finance Authority of revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $9 million for the benefit of a limited partnership or limited liability company to be formed by the Mental Health Association of San Mateo or a related entity to finance the construction, improvement, and equipping of a 16-unit affordable rental housing facility located in the county of San Mateo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on now to item number seven, which is the 915 item, and I believe Mr. Ken Cole is going to speak about this. Nope, Heather Peters.
You got us both today. Good morning, President Slocum, members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. My name's Heather Peters. I'm a Housing Community Development Specialist with San Mateo County Department of Housing, and I am also the project manager for the redevelopment project known as Middlefield Junction. As you're aware, this is a project that began with the new health clinic in North Fair Oaks, and the county has also purchased a parcel of property behind that health clinic that is at 2700 Middlefield. The housing department was tasked with evaluating it for possible housing. We began conversations with our counterparts at Redwood City regarding the existing and aging community center at 2600 Middlefield, as well as the public library, which is severely undersized, at 2500 Middlefield, and the HSA office building at that same location. The county and the city entered into a joint planning agreement whereby each participated to the tune of $100,000 to hire a master planner and a financial consultant to consider this as a possible joint development project. We have moved forward in that process, and we're bringing you today the proposed contract with the master planner and financial consultant. There was a competitive RFP issued, an evaluation committee consisting of representatives from the housing department, the public works department, and the planning and building department on the county level, as well as the planning department from Redwood City participated in the evaluation. There was also an interview committee that consisted of Assistant County Manager Mike Callagie, Deputy County Manager Peggy Jensen, and Redwood City City Manager Melissa Stevenson-Ziás. We all unanimously recommended hiring of the firm of Van Meter Williams Pollock with their consultant, the Economic Planning Systems. Both Van Meter and EPS are very well-known and extremely well-qualified firms in this field. Van Meter is perhaps best known for its 20-year relationship with the Visitation Valley Redevelopment Project, including the redevelopment of the Schleg Locke Factory and the Sunnydale Housing Projects. They also have a long and fruitful relationship with the South San Francisco planning of their downtown district, as well as San Carlos is doing a feasibility analysis of theirs, and the Downtown Precise Plan for Mountain View, just to name a few, to give you a flavor for how well-qualified they are. We, with your approval, will begin scoping and contract in this month. We expect to have that done, should you give us the green light to proceed. And then, the planning process is currently scoped at a year, although we're working very closely to attempt to shave that down another month or two. It would be five phases. The first phase, existing conditions, opportunities, and constraints. The second phase would be programming discussions of the various activities and entities that would be using the space. The third phase, alternative development scenarios and evaluation. The fourth, selecting preferred alternatives, and a very deep dive on financing. Financing will be a part of this from day one, to make sure that we aren't designing something that we can't afford to build or just isn't feasible. And then, the final phase will be a report and presentations, including a detailed budget, and the consultants will advise us on preparing the RFP for the next phase for a development firm or firms. And with that, I would conclude, and ask you for your support, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Questions from the board? Nope. Could you just remind us about what might go on that site?
Sure. Right now, the existing, the existing facilities would be rebuilt. In addition, we would add a significant number of affordable housing units. Those may be cited in different places, they may be different shared resources. The master planning process will bring all that together, and there's a great opportunity to bring things together, where currently, there are clients of the community center that are cross-refering to HSA, that are cross-refering to the health clinic, people are crossing railroad tracks by foot. There's, there's a lot of opportunity for a much more cohesive, community-facing organization, as well as very much-needed affordable housing that will help stem some of the tide of displacement that we're seeing in the area.
Thank you. Motion?
So, moved.
Second.
And that's for items A and B.
But moved and seconded for items A and B, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to the item number eight, which is the 930 matter, and that's a study session. Study session is a chance for the board to talk about, in this particular case, drones, and I think Mr. Byers is going to start the conversation.
Thank you, President Slocum. I'm going to...
Make some comments.
Yes.
Because it was both Supervisor Groom and myself started working on this, and our reasoning was that, you know, I think we do have some regulations on parks, and a reason for having regulations about drones at parks is basically because we have a lot of sensitive, like, for example, sensitive birds that are, you know, that we have found that people do, you know, fly over birds as they're nesting, and that's really disruptive. So, you know, we did think that part of it is just making sure that, that we have some adequate regulation over our park system. Some of the other things had to do with, you know, we are concerned, and we know that there may be some, you know, utilization of this newer technology for public safety. So, for example, you know, I can imagine fire departments using it, and I can also imagine a sheriff's department using this, a drone, as an example for both the earth fire or police, is that we oftentimes have cliff rescues that both agencies have to do, and it might be helpful to have a drone to be able to see specifically, you know, what the hazards, the potential hazards are. I know even, well, when we used to have cars going over Devil's Slide, it was also instructive to be able to see where it was at. That no longer happens because we now have a park there, but still in all, there are cliff rescues on the coast side. The other is that we had heard, actually through Supervisor Pyne's office, that SF International has had about 11 pilots reporting seeing drones in the vicinity of the airport. So, we have three airports, San Carlos, Half of Bay, as well as SF International, and obviously, if a drone, if a goose can take down a 747, obviously, a drone could do the same thing. I don't think it would necessarily be on purpose, but again, it could be a public safety issue for both the airports, as well as law enforcement. We don't really want to stop in evolving technology, so that's really not the goal today, is, you know, to kind of explore options. And the other, I guess the last issue has to do with privacy issues that, you know, we want to make sure that people's privacy is protected. You know, there are, you know, there are, there are a lot of uses for drones. I could think, we had a real estate agent here earlier, and I'm sure that, you know, you see a lot of flights of properties for sale, that could be useful as well, but at the same time, we want to protect people's privacy. We don't have drones going over indiscriminately over private property. So, those were our concerns, and that, that's why we asked our county council to explore both, you know, it is, well, state and local regulation, because we know this is an evolving, evolving, not only evolving technology, but evolving area of concern for both the state and federal government as well. So, with that, Mr. Byers?
Sure, thank you.
Maybe my partner? Did you want to?
Supervisor Groom?
My main concerns are public safety and privacy.
Great. Well, I think both of you identified some of the critical issues that are, that we'd like to discuss today in some detail. I have been, been asked to kind of emcee today's study session, so what I'd like to do is just take a couple minutes and kind of tell you what, what's going to, kind of how this is going to, you know, unfold this morning. So, we have three presenters, okay, for you today, from three different county departments, Public Works, the County Council's Office, and the Parks Department. All right? The intent of today's study session is to inform the board, you know, and the community, of course, on the use of drones, in terms of benefits and risks, and also provide, we're going to spend some time doing this, provide the legal framework for, for drone regulation. So, staff, really, today, staff's goal is to simply kind of lay the, kind of information and, and legal foundation for the board, so that it could consider future regulation, if any. So, we're not, there's no policy recommendations here today, staff is not making any suggestions for policy recommendations. Again, it's just to kind of lay the, lay the foundation. But, you know, mostly, we hope that today's study session is fun. I mean, this is a, this can be a fun topic, all right, and, and can be entertaining. So, we're going to cover a few, a few key areas today. What are drones? We'll start, you know, with that. What are their potential uses? What is the role of government in regulating drones? What level of government between federal, state, and, and local is currently or can be involved in, in regulation? And what are the policy considerations that are typically at play and need to be balanced? Supervisor Horst, you talked about sort of both sides of the issue, and there's a real, real balance here. I think that we can all stipulate to the fact that there, there's really no question that drones, for both recreational and commercial use, are proliferating. In fact, County Manager Malpe was pointing out the graphic, it looks like the invasion of the drones there, the first graphic you see. Hopefully, it's not going to be quite like that, but, but we all recognize that drones are proliferating, and, you know, you really can't pick up a newspaper today without, without reading something about, about drones, it seems like daily. Drones are a big, there's a big concentration of drone activity in San Mateo County, which, of course, is one of the epicenters for technological innovation. And just a quick, quick fun, fun fact, since the FAA has required earlier this year, and you'll hear about this later, that all commercial and recreational drones register with them, the FAA reports that the city of Menlo Park is the top-ranked location in the entire United States for commercial drone registration. Now, of course, our role, we're government, our role, you know, we need to kind of determine, we have a role, right, and we need to kind of determine, you know, what our role should be in sort of, you know, sort, sort this area out, and in trying to strike the right, right balance in terms of our regulatory approach. I mean, it's inevitable that drone technology and use is advancing rapidly, yet as a society, you know, we can't allow, obviously allow drones to run amok. As, as you well know, and as you will hear a little bit later, in addition to the benefit, all the benefits of drones, there are some real public safety and privacy concerns at play. So, with that, I would like to introduce our, our first speaker, and this is Christopher, Christopher St. Peter, who is the Assistant Airport Manager for Public Works, and I believe Chris is going to be here to kind of do a little show and tell. Chris? Are you?
Thank you, Mr. Byers. Could you just answer a quick question?
Sure.
How many, how many drones are registered for commercial use in Menlo Park?
You know, I think it was roughly about, about 200. Do you know, Sandy, offhand?
I don't know offhand.
Yeah.
There's about 600,000.
Right. So, I think it was roughly around 200. Yeah.
600,000.
So, this morning, I brought with me a DGI Phantom III. It's one of the most popular off-the-shelf drones on the market. I'm going to, going to turn it on. You're going to hear some beeps. Don't be alarmed. It's not going to take off. But, no one really knows how many have been sold. I did some research online over the weekend. It seemed to indicate that over half a million of them were sold since 2015. It has a top speed of about 35 miles an hour, but its main purpose is to be used as a camera platform. I'll hold it up here. It has a gyro-stabilized, high-definition camera. I'll take the lens cap off here. And the image is downloaded to a tablet that's normally attached to the controller here. It has a GPS that helps stabilize it while it's in flight, and the, it also has sensors in it, much like your cell phone, that when you tilt your cell phone, it knows how to orient the picture, whether you're in portrait or landscape, and those same types of sensors also help know whether it's tilting or going forward, and you can see as I tilt the drone, the camera stays in the exact same location, no matter what I do. And that's how it stays perfectly still. That's how you get a nice, kind of perfectly stabilized picture. First drone crash.
Who owns that drone?
This is mine. On the top, you see there's the FAA registration number.
Yeah.
That I had to put on there. And here's my FAA drone registration, and that number right there corresponds to the number that's on top of the drone. So, the, the drone has a couple of failsafe features that are built into it, so when you're flying along, and if you let go of the controls, the drone will automatically stop in space. It doesn't just keep going, it just kind of stops and goes into a hover. If the drone were to lose contact with the controller, it will stop, climb up to a preset altitude, and then go back to its starting point, and then land, in theory. All in theory. Now, when you take off, just like a pilot is supposed to do, you're supposed to pre-flight your drone, go through a bunch of checks, make sure all of this stuff is done correctly, and everything is supposed to work correctly. With respect to airports, you're, you'll talk about this later, when you're operating within five miles of an airport, the software that this company makes requires that you, if you're going to operate within five miles of an airport, you see the airport's airspace as you approach it, and it warns you that you're getting close to an airport, and it limits your ability to enter that airspace through what's called a geofence. You can't actually physically enter that airspace unless you have permission to do so, and DGI's website requires that you go to their website and enter some information that's identifying to you, such as a credit card or some other information, and that essentially unlocks that airspace. So, if there's an issue with your drone later on entering that airspace, you can go back, go back to DGI and say, hey, who was that drone that was in my airspace? And they can go back and find out who that person was. So, there's a way... So there's a way to research who that person was that was going into that airspace. So with respect to drone operations at, at San Carlos Airport, we routinely receive anywhere from three to five notifications a day, people who are asking to operate within our airspace. These are primarily people who are calling from Bedwell Bayfront Park, Redwood Shores, Bear Island, Foster City, San Mateo. As an aside, the city of Menlo Park has recently banned all remote aircraft operations at Bedwell Bayfront Park. There are other times we receive phone calls from people who are just thinking about buying a drone, or parents actually will stop in the airport office with their kids who are inquiring about buying a drone for them, or they just bought a drone for their kids and they're just trying to learn about what the rules are. And, or we'll get calls from local companies who are inquiring about testing new technology and whether or not they might be able to apply this new technology to the drone industry. So, you know, we look at these interactions as being important to us as an airport operator, because it gives us a chance to not only teach them about the rules and regulations, but also discuss the responsibilities associated with operating a vehicle such as a drone and sharing airspace with manned aircraft. So that's, that's kind of our, our take on the industry as it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions and comments?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah. I had just one.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to get a little clarification about how the drones can or cannot operate around an airport. So I take the San Carlos airspace.
Yes, why?
Do they, they need permission from our airport to be in that airspace, or you seem to, seem to suggest that maybe you just go online and give somebody your credit card and then?
They actually, so they have to call the airport, and they have to call the control tower. They don't need permission, they just need to notify.
Supervisor Groom?
Well, that doesn't seem very safe. I mean, to have, you could, I mean, you, you said, you said that you got three to five notifications a day. What if that were 25 to 30 notifications a day? Would, would the drones have impact on, on the, the commercial and, and private airplanes that are leaving and coming to San Carlos?
It would have, it would depend on where they were operating.
And, and but, but, and you have no control over that? The FAA does? I mean, you can't, you, can you tell a drone to not come?
I could suggest another location for them to operate. I, I, and I have. I mean, I can certainly say, I don't think that's a very good location to operate. Perhaps you should go to another area.
And does the San Carlos Airport have enough staff to, to manage this?
Yes.
And Supervisor Groom, we are off, we certainly are going to be touching a lot of those kind of jurisdictional questions shortly, so.
Supervisor Horsley?
So Christopher, you're saying that that, your particular drone has technology that will warn the user that they're entering airspace?
Mm-hmm.
And that in order to do that, in order to get into it, you would have to then contact the air, the tower?
Mm-hmm.
Suppose then somebody bought that thing in, that, in West Virginia, would that technology apply, would they, if they brought it out here, would that technology apply universally?
All over the country. So it has the, the airspace for the entire United States is loaded into the software that this.
And, and you also said that somebody, they could request permission, they didn't really have to get it, it's kind of voluntary, but they would just have to?
It's, it was, it's safe to say that they are, they are, to follow the rules, they have to call us and, and, and ask permission.
Do all drones have that technology?
No. I mean, people can build drones off the shelf with parts that, you know, this is an, I, I, I went online, I ordered a credit card, it's an easy way to acquire a, a piece of equipment like this. But there are certainly people who are very much into building themselves, and, you know, they don't have to, they, they aren't required to.
Have the same technology? So they could conceivably, if somebody built their own drone, and it got out of their range of control, it could, would it keep going? Or would it stop like yours, or?
It could keep going.
It could keep going, okay. Is there anything that the airport would recommend in terms of regulation on drones?
I think that's better answered by.
Okay.
By DJI.
Did you have any thoughts yourself, or?
No, that really gets into issues of, of FAA regulation and, and rules and policy, yeah.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Christopher, forgive me for this question, but are, but is it, when a drone is flying, is it silent? Like, after you turned it on, it was silent? Or is it like those model airplanes that create a noise?
It's like a model aircraft that creates a noise until it gets to about 50 or 80 feet, and then it's pretty quiet. You really can't tell that it's there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask one question? I don't know if this is for you or maybe after, but are most of these drones used sort of for recreational purposes, or they're used for business purposes? Sort of curious, I mean, I haven't seen too many, but you, I didn't see them on the news.
I use it for recreational purposes. If it's used for business purposes, again, I, I think they're going to speak to this, but it falls under a different category of operation and a different type of licensing.
I'm sort of curious, well, maybe this is for later, too, is, you know, that's, you bought that yourself, and then someone said, parents buy them for their children. Do they buy them to that level of sophistication, or do, there's some, really, so they're drones are drones, there's nothing, a small, a small inexpensive model versus, you know?
There are, there are varying levels of, of drones, but, you know, around Christmas time, there were several kids who showed up at the airport that had a drone just like this, that their parents bought for them, yeah, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher.
Thanks.
Next, I'd like to introduce Sandy Nierenberg, who's a, a deputy in, in the County Council's office. I think it was the first, first day that Sandy started practicing law in our office, we gave her a special project. And the, we asked Sandy to take, you know, sort of tackle the subject of drones and kind of, and kind of run with it. And, and she certainly has done that. In time, she's kind of become our office expert on, on drone law, for lack of a better, better term. And in fact, at my request, last April, Sandy gave a presentation to the California County Council's Association Annual Meeting, and that presentation was very, very well received. So with that, I, I introduce Sandy Nierenberg.
Thank you. Good morning, President Slocum, Board. So here today, speaking of drones, this isn't Space Invaders, this is actually one of my favorite images I've found, it's from Getty Images, but, you know, drones, what are we looking for here in the county? Just as a preface, I'm going to go over a little bit of background, I am going to, I would say fly through, but David has pointed out, he is going to laugh at all my unintentional puns, so I will not say that. Current regulation, federal, state, some local ordinances that we have that may be applicable, considerations for potential county regulation, including, you know, kind of questions you guys were asking, current and future anticipated uses. It'll be a short list, because I could not list all of the imaginative ways people could use drones. Risks and benefits based on incidents we've seen through drone use in other jurisdictions as well as our own. And then walking through options for county regulation, and I'll go through all of those, a little bit of a preemption crash course in one slide, if I can do that, and then some other areas where we think that there is some opportunity for local regulation, if that's the direction you'd like to pursue. So first of all, a background. As John mentioned, one of my very first assignments coming here over to the government side from private practice was drones that were harassing cattle on the coast side, and people using their drones to herd cattle, in the process, running cattle through fences, causing injury to the cattle, causing property damage. They were doing this from county roads, so they weren't on private property, technically, one might, they might argue they weren't on private property when they were doing this, but their drones were certainly low-flying on private property and causing a lot of damage and headache. So that raised the question, what is a drone? My first question. Who's using them? Are they permitted? Is this type of use permitted currently? And what can we as a county do to ensure that, you know, property damage, things like this, risks, benefits are balanced, so that we can kind of incorporate them into our local community? So what is a drone? Federal regulation defines a drone, you know, an aircraft as any device that is intended or used or intended to be used for flight in the air. This in the drone community gets a lot of laughs, because people started saying, well, paper airplanes are flight in the air, all sorts of other things. Generally, self-propelled flight, or, you know, some sort of sustained flight is the terminology that people use for drones. We've got recreational drones, you've got commercial drones, you've got military drones. So this is, as Chris just showed you, this is one of the most popular drone models. This is the DJI Standard 3 Phantom Quadcopter. It is used both recreationally and commercially. You can buy it today on Amazon for $475. It comes with a standard 520-megapixel camera, about 25 minutes of flight time, and about a 1.2-mile range, as long as that's not interrupted by buildings, trees, other such things. You've also got another commercial, or another available model, this is a Cheersin CX-10C Quadcopter. This one is only $22 on Amazon. It is also only 1 and 1/2 inches by 1 and 1/2 inches, so that's fun. It also is equipped with a camera, and it has about six minutes of flight time. So you've got a really wide range of what a drone can be, how available it is. You can get same-day Amazon delivery, and one-day buy drone, delivery drone, if you'd like. So that's great. You've got commercial drones, your DJI Phantom drones, those are used commercially. You also have kind of a broader, more specific commercial drone. This is a picture of a prototype from Amazon. Amazon has a very well-developed strategy that they are pursuing to have drone delivery to your door within 30 minutes. Right now, they have about 12 prototypes, all are under 55 pounds, which is the FAA magical number for drones, while you can still be in their broader framework. They all will fly under 400 feet, and they can fly up to 10 miles. This is a military drone. This is not what we're talking about today, just so you know. This one particularly is an RQ-7 Shadow, it's used for condescend, surveillance, all those types of things. None of what I'm talking about today is involving these guys, just to have that clear. So current regulation, start slow. We have the FAA, that regulates national airspace. It prohibits careless or reckless operation of drones. You've got kind of in tandem National Transportation Safety Board. So a really quick drone primer, what is national airspace? This was one of the first questions we came across. There is a case from a very long time ago, it is called Cosby, it is about chickens. In case you aren't familiar with this, there is a tiny little chicken farmer out in rural, you know, east coast, eastern seaboard for World War II. They're a little municipal airport next door, much like San Carlos Airport is today, until the US military took it over and used it to fly their great big cargo ships in and out. The chickens did not like that. This neighboring chicken farmer's chickens were throwing themselves into the walls and killing themselves, all sorts of bad things. And so the case that came out of this is Cosby. And what is national airspace? And does a property owner have a right in their property that goes vertical? Or are they just horizontal boundaries? Up until that point in time, it was believed that you owned up into the heavens, FAA says, you know, or at that time, the FAA didn't exist, but US government saying, no, you know, we've got to regulate airspace, all this stuff. So what comes out of Cosby, and what's important to kind of keep in mind as we go through this today, is that a person does have a property interest in their vertical airspace. That property interest isn't defined. In Cosby, they said it's 83 feet, because that was the height at which the planes flew through this property owner's airspace, but it was defined as the immediate reaches. And so that's just something that we want to keep in mind, that property owners do have a property interest in the immediate reaches of their land. I'm not going to go through all of this, but I will point out that 35 years ago, some people in this room may or may not have been born in 1981, the FAA first recognized that model aircraft can at times pose a hazard to full-scale aircraft in flight and to persons and properties on the surface. That's the first time we start seeing model aircraft coming up. Not a whole lot happens, as you can see, in the intervening, you know, 20, 30 years, but starting in about 2007, FAA recognizes drones as a type of aircraft. 2012, you have the FAA Modernization and Reform Act, that's the congressional action that is authorizing all these types of regulations. And as you can see, if you can see, through 2015, there is a lot of activity around drones. FAA came out with its proposed rulemaking in February of 2015, they were supposed to come out with rules for everybody, they just came out with commercial rules. Even those have kind of been changing. But where we land today is as of about last week, Part 107, which is the FAA's new rules on drones, became effective. Here is a concise, if possible, example of these rules. You see on the left-hand side your commercial rules around commercial operation. On the right-hand side, you've got rules around recreational or hobby use. The reason for this is that the FAA authorizing legislation specifically says the FAA cannot create rules for hobby or recreational use. So FAA is focusing on its commercial use. General rules, you've got to pass a knowledge test to be certified to be an operator, you've got to be at least 16 years old, daylight hours plus or minus 30 minutes, you need to keep it in your visual line of sight as an operator, you can also get remote pilot certification, up to 400 feet or 400 feet of a structure. The stated purpose of that is so that drones can, you know, observe or monitor structures, hazard mitigation, bridges, things like that. Three miles of visibility, prior permission, and it is permission from controlled airports. They, they all have to be registered, and that flights over people, as of right now, are currently prohibited. That may change, they're still thinking about that one. But importantly, at the bottom, as you can see in yellow, is that waivers are permitted. And as of the 27th, when this came into effect, waivers had already been granted under the pre-existing framework, but this new Part 107 has already granted, I want to say, several thousands of waivers in the last week. You can grant waivers as to any of those, so, you know, you have to prove that you can still operate safely, but this isn't a hard and fast set of rules.
Sandy, if I could just jump in. I don't know if you were going to address this point, these rules are relatively new from FAA.
Yes.
Yet they're already apparently revisiting, a lot of the commercial users are unhappy with a couple aspects of these rules, one being it has to stay within, drone has to stay within visual line of sight, and the other that you can't fly over people, because that really impacts their sort of business ideas. And so I understand the FAA is going, is revisiting these rules as we speak, right?
Oh, yes.
So I don't know if you were going to address that.
Yeah, so these rules, they came out with a notice of proposed rulemaking, which is essentially the draft rules last February, February 2015, and they contained about these same rules. Some of the things did change during the comment period. But the FAA has made it clear that they are still looking at this, especially flights over people being prohibited. All, commercial people can still get exceptions to a lot of these, so there is kind of a general dissatisfaction with some of them, the visual line of sight requirement, not being able to fly over people. But if that general dissatisfaction is there, people can still address it individually by just getting a waiver.
Can I interrupt?
Yes, of course.
Supervisor Groom had a question.
Are there fines or penalties if you don't follow these rules?
So there are fines. There is a famous case called the Perker Case, which is the first one that had applied to drones back in 2011, and this was a guy who had, I don't know, probably a Phantom or something of that, about quality and capacity, flew all over the University of Virginia, filming like a promotional video, something like that, going under tunnels and overpasses, flying through their big open lawn and all those types of things. In the process, at one fun point at the end of the video, you see a pedestrian kind of dive out of the way to, you know, avoid the drone coming. And so the FAA ended up fining him $10,000 for reckless flight. There is not a drone-specific, but a broader, and I think I mentioned the exact code regulation earlier, prohibition against any careless or reckless flying of any aircraft. And so the Perker Case was big, because it was the first time it applied it to drones and called drones an aircraft, and said that they were within this jurisdiction, such you could find them. There is an interesting period thereafter where various regional FAA groups kind of went about enforcement a little bit differently. You had some who were really rigorous in going after people, you had some who didn't really do anything. So yes, there is a capacity to, to find somebody, but you have to report it to the FAA, the FAA has to see it, that in and of itself is nearly impossible, because they are not out, boots on the ground, monitoring for drone use, and then to build the monitoring for drone use, and then to build the case up for it. It's not really, unless you're somebody like Perker and they want to make an example of you, and you happen to have a video you posted on YouTube flying in a very careless way.
Could I just say one more thing?
Yes, of course.
We're going to need to take a break, like around 11-ish to reload the video and take care of that end of the business. And so I'm not sure how much longer your presentation is, but just know that around 11-ish, we do need to do that.
That sounds great. I'll suggest a good stopping point between slides in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pine, I think may have had a question.
If that doesn't interrupt the flow here. So, why is it that the recreational hobby drones, you know, aren't subject to the same regulations as the commercial ones? Because these recommendations all seem to be things that one would want to require, but they're only recommendations.
The FAA authorizing legislation, which is FAA Modernization Reform Act explicitly says in it that the FAA is not allowed to regulate hobbyist use. And later in the presentation, I'll define exactly what they call hobbyist use, but the FAA is not allowed to go there right now.
Okay, and then finally, coming back to the issue that was brought up earlier, there is a rule that says, don't fly within five miles of an airport unless you contact the airport. And again, that's only contact. You don't need their permission. That's what was said earlier.
The language is prior permission from a controlled airport. That is one of those points that may currently be in flux in some of the fact sheets and whatnot that have very recently come out from the FAA. In those, the FAA is stating that maybe they want requests to come from them or to come to the FAA so that they can go about granting them in a more systematic fashion. But currently, it is stated as prior permission or authorization.
It is prior permission.
From the airport. And I know, for example, SFO has somebody now who's designated drone request person who receives those requests. But it's my understanding those aren't often granted.
Thank you.
So as you just pointed out, Supervisor Pine, you're right. On the right-hand side, we do have very similar recommendations, but they are just recommendations for the reason I just explained. The only rule that they do have is they do have to follow the general aviation rules, like don't operate recklessly or carelessly. And even recreational use has to register online with the FAA, as Chris had showed with his certificate and the registration number printed somewhere on the drone. Let's see. To your question on enforcement, this is the FAA standard, what they would like to do. You know, from an enforcement background, it's a little bit difficult to do this type of thing. The FAA encourages our local law enforcement to, you know, undertake witness identification, to interview them, identify and interview suspected operators, you know, if there's any details about the viewing and recording, location of the event, the light, the weather condition, the damage, the injuries, et cetera, et cetera, sensitivities in the location, collect the evidence, all those things, and then you take all that information and you just give it to the FAA. And that's where it currently ends. There's the phone number that you can call, or you can email with that information if anybody in the public has such a report to make. And then also, just to end, federal regulation may be a good breakpoint. Not only do we have all the FAA regulations, but there is an extensive world of federal regulations which would prohibit drone use that a lot of people may or may not be aware of. The example here, we have Monterey Bay Marine Sanctuary, and all overflights below 1,000 feet are prohibited from the high tide, mean high tide line, I think it is, out to three miles. So basically, drone operation is currently prohibited on federal, you know, under federal law anywhere on the beach. Our coastal area here goes almost up to San Francisco, all the way down into Santa Cruz and beyond. So there are still a lot of drone operation going on on our beaches. So this might be a good place to take a break.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll take seven minutes. Okay, we are back in session, and we were in the middle of a presentation by county council on drones.
And just to give a quick sense of timing here, just checking on timing, I think we have about 15, 20 minutes of presentation, and then Marlene Finley, the Parks Director, is going to just say a few words about her observations about drones in parks.
Does that 15 minutes include Mr. Silverman and everybody?
Mr. Silverman is not, he's just observing today.
Oh, he's just observing, okay. Very good.
And then question, you know, obviously, public comment.
He's a trained observer.
Very good. Okay.
Okay, thanks. So just right before the break, we are finishing up on the federal regulation. And if you keep anything in your mind from kind of the blur of slides that I just went through, it's that this is changing nearly every day, it seems. Every time I came up with an iteration of this presentation, the FAA then came out with new guidelines which required me to redo it. So, and a lot of the parts within are still a little bit ambiguous, so it just is always changing. But that's kind of where we are as of last week when I sent this presentation in. State regulation, on the other hand, is kind of the flip side. Here is our one state law that has been signed so far. It's kind of known as the paparazzi law because it is basically just intended to prevent paparazzi. You know, it expands physical invasion of privacy to include knowingly entering the airspace, I'm highlighting knowingly, in order to record the plaintiff engaging in a private, personal, or familial activity. So if you inadvertently enter the airspace and then record them, that's not a violation. There's all sorts of other fun things in there that make it pretty much only to prevent paparazzi from coming after people. Just an interesting note, county councils, ourselves, and the city attorneys have authority to pursue a civil fine ranging from $5,000 to $50,000. So if paparazzi suddenly becomes an issue here in the county, then that's something that we can tackle. And then on the state side, what we mostly see is a lot of vetoed legislation and a lot of pending legislation. Vetoed legislation runs the gamut. The veto message kind of is always just a reason for vetoing. There doesn't really seem to be a clear thread as to the state's position or the governor's position on drones. They've vetoed, you know, public agencies from using drones, except in certain exemptions. Expanding trespass, which is something I'll talk about later, to go up to 350 feet, was vetoed. Indemnifying firefighters and other emergency personnel from taking action, you know, including destroying it during an emergency response, that was vetoed. Prohibiting drones from flying above public schools during school hours or using drones to capture images of school grounds, vetoed. And flying drones over correctional facilities, which, if you haven't heard the news, that's actually an issue. It hasn't come up quite locally, but using drones to smuggle contraband into correctional facilities has been an ongoing issue for a couple of years now. So that legislation was vetoed. Sitting on the governor's desk right now, we have these three, five bills that are all drone-specific, so we will know by the end of the month what he does with them. Some of them are repeats for the ones that he vetoed last year. We've got misdemeanor to interfere with emergency personnel. We've got prohibiting drones over Department of Fish and Wildlife land. Number, the third one down has a lot built into it. That is basically prohibiting anybody who has a domestic violence restraining order or stayaway order from using a drone to capture images of the protected person. It includes drone use in the definition of stalking, and then a bunch of non-binding language about prohibiting drones around critical infrastructure. The fourth one, you know, it requires drones sold in California to include a link to the FAA safety regulations, kind of better disseminate that information to hobbyists especially, and would require owners to purchase liability insurance. And the last one is the one that was vetoed last year, which would indemnify emergency responders for damage caused to drones for interfering with emergency response. If you guys were listening to the news this morning, there was another report of drones interfering with fire safety operations down near Big Sur. So that's kind of an ongoing issue with our state and the wildfire response systems that we have.
So suffice it to say that the governor is doing a lot of videoing of drone legislation, and it's been pretty interesting to read his veto messages, to kind of get a sense of what he's, you know, what his basis is. But it's not stopping the legislature.
Not stopping. We've got a handful of people who are very, of representatives, who are very into pushing drone legislation. In addition to the five that are currently sitting on the governor's desk, this is a list of other active drone bills. Some of them are resurrected from prior vetoed bills. Some of them are totally new. And I'm not going to read through all of them, but they cover the gamut. We see prohibiting drones above schools has popped up again. The liability insurance requirement has popped up again. Marking drones with identifying information. The first one would make drones similar to, you know, driving a car where you have to stop if you injure somebody or have an accident and exchange information, those types of things. So in the coming year, we'll be able to watch and see what happens to this type of legislation. But absent a 180 in prior practice, I don't expect a whole lot of state laws coming out about drone use. So that brings us to our current ordinances. We have a couple on the books that would apply directly to drones, some others, you know, kind of general use and behavior that might extend to drone use. But these ones that I've listed here, you've got under trespass. It's unlawful to trespass, loiter, wander, or be upon lands designated as dangerous premises. Well, what if you're using a drone to enter lands designated as dangerous premises? The same, it's unlawful to remain on private property after notification to leave or posted notice not to enter. What if you use your drones? This kind of wraps right back to the beginning with the chasing cows with your drones. All of the areas where drones were used to chase cows had no trespassing signs. And so if drones indeed going, you know, low-flying over your property is trespass, then that would have been an infraction. Parks also already has language that prohibits any self-propelled model aircraft of any kind in county parks and recreation areas. These are the new county parks, no drone signs that have been going up. It also prohibits users of public trails from trespassing on neighboring property or invading privacy in any way. So both of those should also, or can also currently be applied to drone use. One interesting note is that despite, you know, these prohibitions that are currently active, we do still see a lot of drone use in county parks. I'll talk about that. I'm sure Ms. Finley can talk about that more extensively, but that does continue to be an ongoing issue. So, now we get to the part for today. What types of things need to be thought of in considering whether local, whether we need to take some sort of local regulatory action? There are definitely benefits and risks, and so understanding those would be part, obviously, of the process. Some, you know, just examples of benefits, you've got a strong hobbyist community in the area. There was a lot of use in the Bedwell Park and Menlo Park, and now Menlo Park is prohibiting drones, but the hobbyists came out strong there. There is an active community. There are, some of the major drone developers are here in the Bay Area, active racing community, things like that. There is the opportunity for public agency use, one thing I didn't mention earlier. In addition to the FAA's commercial and hobbyist guidelines and/or rules, there is also a separate tier for public agency use, where you can just apply and get certified. So public agencies, fire departments, law enforcement, parks, things like that, do actively use drones. You also have commercial use. And then there's risks. For the benefits, as I said, you know, commercial use, it's a rapidly growing industry nationally. There's direct economic benefits, a lot of jobs, a lot of interest. A lot of local businesses either do use or are interested in using drones to help improve efficiency or augment their businesses, even if they're not necessarily a drone-specific business. You know, increased efficiencies, it's argued, can have a positive environmental impact. So, for example, delivery services, things like that, reducing the amount of vehicle traffic, or at least ground vehicle traffic. Some of the risks, I'll go through these. Public safety, we were talking about Devil's Slide earlier. We actually have had a rescue of a drone operator on Devil's Slide who hopped the fence to go retrieve his drone after he was trying to photograph the military installment that's protected on the other side of the fence. So that was public agency time and risk for somebody having to hop the fence and go rescue him. Several crashed drones have been found in county parks. And then just a whole litany of other issues. Drones downing power lines, drones crashing into infants in their strollers in the street, drones crashing into college football stadiums, nearly hitting military skydivers parachuting into the stadium. Pretty much once a week at least, you can find some sort of headline about some sort of public safety risk caused by drones. This picture here, I'm a Southern Californian, so you know, Southern California at heart. The drones, drones flying around the fire response in Cajon Pass last year pretty famously grounded the firefighter response airplanes, which was the direct cause of the fire, being able to jump the I-15, burning out all these vehicles really had the fire spread. So that, as I mentioned before, is an ongoing issue, especially in emergency and fire response. Risks also, you've got security concerns, as we've kind of mentioned throughout the presentation. Enforcing drone rules is extremely difficult. If they have, you know, even the Phantom that we talked about earlier has a 1.2 mile range, it's supposed to be within the visual line of sight. But if you think, if you see a drone, the operator might be on a hill a mile and a half away. So even if that drone is violating law, if they're not properly marked the way they should be, or if you can't catch them to check what their registration is, you really have no way of catching the operator. They've been used, or concerns about being used as a means to survey critical infrastructure. Drones have been found flying around bridges, as I'll mention later. The Golden Gate Transit Authority now prohibits drones. Some sightings, we have a couple bridges in our, or at least one bridge in our jurisdiction. Other critical infrastructure pieces that drones in other jurisdictions have been cited flying around, so that's something to keep in mind. Drones using to case property for future criminal activity. Drones armed with weapons, this was, went viral on YouTube. This is a picture from a community college student in Connecticut who, as part of his class project, built a drone and then strapped a gun to it and then fired his drone in his backyard, so it didn't end up necessarily being illegal, because in Connecticut, you can fire guns all you want in your backyard, I guess, wherever he was. But it shows the capacity for loading drones with things. Then there's a couple other, you know, drones have flown onto the White House lawn a couple times now. Inmates are getting arrested for conspiring to smuggle using drones, all sorts of stuff. Another big one which doesn't immediately come to mind is the environmental concerns with drone use. This is a clip from the Friends of the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. Drones are actively a problem with flushing harbor seals out of their nesting areas, and also with a lot of the migratory birds and, you know, some of the protected species on the coastline. Drones wanting to get good pictures of them, so flying right up to them and whatnot. So it's gotten to the point where they're having to post warnings and please, please do not fly your drones around these areas. As I've listed, you've got nesting species of birds, using to flush them. A lot of the raptors fly right in the range, that's prime drone range. That's how they need to fly in order to spot and catch their prey, and so when you have drones flying in that range, that disrupts their natural activity. The Marine Mammal Protection Act is another issue. A big issue is that drones are an ignition source for wildfires. The particular battery that they use is a tested and known source of ignition, and so when they land or crash in public parks or other dry areas, of which we have a lot of in the county, that is known to be able to start wildfires. And then, of course, quiet enjoyment. As Chris mentioned earlier, once they're about above 80 feet, they're harder to hear, but below that altitude, it kind of sounds like a weed whacker, you know, coming by. I've had them on my neighbor's property and whatnot. You hear them. Privacy and property rights. I won't get too much into this, but I will, you know, here in San Mateo, a few years ago, we had police reports in the Daily Journal about a drone hovering in front of a resident's bedroom window. This is probably the most easy to imagine of the issues that could come with drone use. Neighbor charged with felony eavesdropping for using a drone. And just remembering that Cosby case, that people do have, while it's not clearly defined, people do have a property interest that goes vertical in addition to horizontal. So drones are really pushing the boundary of what that property interest is and how it should be protected. A lot of different potential uses I've mentioned throughout the day. One, you know, commercial, real estate, agriculture is a big one that's not listed here. Government, search and rescue, disaster response, inspection, recreational. One that I think is particularly interesting that I'll highlight is delivery. Amazon Primair, just about a month and a half ago, came out and announced at a big conference their vision for autonomous drone delivery, which would be delivery in 30 minutes or less from regional warehouses to the destination. All these drones would fly under 400 feet. They're currently testing, if you'll notice, outside the US, because as Amazon states on its website, they'll deploy when we have the regulatory support needed to realize our vision, which of course just means they can't do it here because they're not allowed to. Here is their diagram for how they envision drone delivery happening. As you can see, that red is from 400 to 500 feet, and then, of course, right over airports, there wouldn't be any flying. But from 200, 400 feet, you would have your Jetsons-like belt of high-speed transit, and then under 200 feet, you'd have drones dropping down. There are some great videos that unfortunately would not load here in the Board of Supervisors chambers. But of this vision, which is, you know, the drone loading and then whizzing on out, and you put out a little path. drone loading and then whizzing on out, and you put out a little pad, you know, signal in your backyard, and it just bloop, drops right down. FAA regulations, interesting note, they prohibit dropping anything, but they don't prohibit carrying anything. So it would require a takeoff and a landing in order to do delivery under the current FAA regulations. That becomes important. Who is using drones? It's a little unclear. Well, here's a clip. You've got a lot of real estate photography, as has been mentioned, people praising, people posting their images. This is a PG&E drone inspecting pipeline. They're not currently doing it in San Mateo County, but this is out, I want to say, in Fresno. That's one of the public uses that really gets a lot of traction. There's a lot of pipeline, a lot of utilities lines that are very difficult to inspect, currently require helicopters and a lot of staff time. So drones help with that. This guy, I walked past this guy at lunch last year. He was just, this is in case you can't tell, this is right in front of the Fox Theater. He was from, as he told me, a local media source. I, you know, inquired without giving away who I was. Oh, how interesting. Do you need a permit for that? No, no, you don't. He did. He didn't have one. But, you know, operating anyways, flew all over the plaza, flew all over the buildings. Apparently no, you know, knowledge of what he's supposed to be doing. Next Door, in case you are not familiar with it, is a wealth of fascinating information about local communities, web forum. If you can't read this, it's, "My son lost a 17-inch quadcopter, also known as a drone. It's black, and he made it as a class project. He'd very much like to find it. We were flying it at Highlands Park in San Carlos when it flew away towards downtown. If it landed in anyone's yard, please let us know." You can call, and she gives her phone number.
Renegade drone.
Yes, exactly. This is not uncommon. If drones lose the line of sight, some drones, you know, the DJI ones, the more recent iterations have a lot more capability when functioning well to stop themselves from this type of thing. But runaway drones, if you gain altitude too quickly, if you drop altitude too quickly, if a tree or a building gets in your way, you lose connection, and it can often end up like this. We have another one. This is a company drone, so this guy should have been following commercial regulations. He was not. This is his DJI Phantom 2, a white contraption with four rotors. It was last seen at an industrial in Howard, flying over the office buildings towards Whipple. In case you don't know, that is one block from the 101. Yeah. And this drone, which is, this is one of the nicer drones, you know, DJI is very reputable, and it just kind of takes off. So there are risks involved with these drones. This person wants to use drones to go find their lost cat in a canyon. They have all sorts of uses. And then, if you can see, everybody kind of has their little cat psychic things. People are very involved. But drones in San Mateo County, in even our immediate area, are being used all over the place, apparently without regard to the FAA regulations that are in place, regulations and recommendations, depending on where you are. So that brings us to what can we do if you are interested on a county level to regulate them? I'm not going to spend long on preemption because it is just about the most boring thing possible when you're in law school. But for your purposes, federal law trumps state and local law. There can be a number of ways that can happen. It can expressly state that, or it can be implied either because they conflict in such a way that it's impossible to comply with both, or Congress has, you know, stated an intent or regulation so extensive that they intended to occupy the full field. For our purposes, potentially preempted or more likely preempted, our registration, the FAA has had many a fact sheet that says, do not even attempt to go there, operator certification, and commercial operation. Again, so many FAA statements saying, this is preempted, do not even try to come into our operator certification areas. But expressly not preempted areas are hobbyist operation. Again, I've mentioned a couple times, the legislation specifically says that the FAA cannot regulate hobbyists. Privacy, law enforcement, trespass, land use, and zoning. These, the FAA has come out multiple times, saying that these are a state function and thus available without preemption for local regulation. A quick note on the hobbyist side, what the FAA defines as hobbyist is your model aircraft. I just want to give you the definition here. The FAA defines model aircraft as anything flown strictly for recreational use. So if you're taking pictures and then loading them up on YouTube and getting, you know, advertising revenue from YouTube, that still is commercial. Strictly recreational use, under 55 pounds, and then basically following all sorts of safety rules. Notably, that you operate within a program of a community-based organization and within community-based sets of safety guidelines. And so I'll get to why that is so important in just a minute. Then just remembering, okay, our first regulatory option is trespass. As you remember in Cosby, there is some currently not very well-defined vertical private, you know, property ownership in your land. And so, for example, one option would be to revise the trespass ordinance to explicitly include a vertical boundary.
Hey Sandy, I'm interrupting for one moment. Just in the interest of time, I know you're going to cover just briefly each of these areas. Maybe you can just, you know, sort of hit the highlights of those areas.
So trespass, vertical boundary, you can do that. We have the vetoed bill that's up again at the state level, but we'll see if that passes. Land use and zoning, you can adopt a zoning regulation that explicitly defines certain zones as prohibiting taking off and landing. This is kind of seen as the most preemption-proof way, but to note, a note for you that you, of course, would have to go through all of the normal land use regulation issues. Limited public safety issues, this is what a lot of people do, which is to prohibit event-specific use or very specific use, you know, no flying over Levi's Stadium, is what the City of Santa Clara did. No flying over large public events, no flying near the Golden Gate Bridge, things like that. And then, community standards, this is what actually LA has done, which is say, we are setting the community standards. And they set their community standards as exactly what the FAA said, as their recommendations for hobbyist use. But one option would be there is you could set different community-based standards based on the specific needs of San Mateo County. And that, those are your options as we see them.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. That's everything we always wanted to know about drones. I know that members have questions and comments, but let me suggest, take the temperature of the board and see if there's interest in informing an ad hoc committee on drones, because what started off, in my mind, as sort of straightforward, has now become exceptionally complex. And there are airport owners, and there are parks people, and wildlife, and all of that. And so perhaps it's an idea that we could entertain to establish an ad hoc committee on drones with the intention of gathering folks together to have conversations about this and then reporting back to the board. And if I could, I'd just respectfully suggest that since Supervisor Groom and Supervisor Horsley were instrumental in bringing this forward, perhaps they would volunteer to be on the board subcommittee. But wait to hear from the rest of you.
Sure.
No, we've worked on this for some time, actually. It started because the coast side, with drones actually chasing cattle around, and then we did, we also heard the same thing on Next Door, the drones that were lost, and we started getting worried about what would happen if it ends up interfering with the airport over at San Carlos, or even the Half Moon Bay. So we'd be glad to continue with our...
You know, we've had some ongoing conversations at the Coastal Commission, as you know, about pups, the pups. And the public just loves to go onto the beach when the moms are giving birth, and of course, they all die. And so to learn that now drones are zeroing in on those mothers and pups, that's just, you know, that's unconscionable, really. And so I think that, you know, that's something that, since we have a big piece of coast side, that's certainly something we could look at.
Thank you.
Just have a quick question. Are we limited to the unincorporated areas or those properties we know? So, because I know the City of Menlo Park has their own, so this is still really the unincorporated. We're not doing this for countywide.
Still unincorporated.
Ah, okay.
Except perhaps for property that we own.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
Supervisor Pike.
I was kind of thinking, I know this, had that same question, and, you know, this might be an area where, you know, we might want to involve some stakeholders from the cities, because, you know, in a perfect world, although it may be too early for this, have some sort of a model ordinance. I mean, the difficult thing here is, the legal landscape is so fluid, and the technology is so fluid, you know, it's not clear, like, what the right time is to put a stake in the ground. But it's going to be of concern to all the cities, too.
And I think we certainly should involve, if we form this, the Half Moon Bay, and the San Carlos airports, these couple people from the airports, because they seem to be, will probably be more and more and dramatically affected by this, based on everything you've told us today.
So I, go ahead Supervisor, I'm sorry.
You did an excellent job on your presentation, Sandy. But was Marlene Finley going to speak about this as well?
Correct. Our final speaker is our wonderful Parks Director, Marlene Finley. It's up to the board. I mean, she can say a few words, I know she had a brief presentation, or she can be part of the, to the extent the board is, you know, create a committee. First, I suggest she do my motion, just as a, just to formalize the committee as a technical matter, make a motion. But she certainly, well, I would imagine would want to be part of that process. It's up to the board.
So how about if we make the motion and then hear from Marlene?
I'll make the motion to have an ad hoc committee of both myself and Supervisor Groom.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Director Finley.
Thank you, honorable members of the board, Mr. Malpia and Mr. Byers. I just wanted to say a few additional words. I was asked to speak today, so I just have a little bit more to share about the increasing incidence of illegal drone use in our county parks. Anything from crashed drones to lost drones to drones impacting wildlife. You mentioned the seals being flushed from their pupping sites, and that's really the hotspot where we're seeing drone use in the county parks, is out on the coast, at Fitzgerald Marine Reserve, Devil's Slide Trail, in those areas. And those are some of the most vulnerable wildlife that we have. And there's multiple layers of protection in federal and state law, and still, and the county ordinance, and we still have illegal use of drones. It's very difficult to enforce. And our docents and the volunteers report them, work to get ahold of the Rangers, but the Rangers aren't at a Ranger station at a phone. We use radios, and we raise the Rangers on their radios, our docents carry radios, and that helps. But sometimes, it was just getting so frustrating that I told the volunteers, call dispatch, call 911, and we could get a sheriff, or we could get somebody else to help us enforce. And you'll see those videos on YouTube of the seals at Fitzgerald Marine Reserve being flushed, and the little ones left stranded there all by themselves. So I also wanted to mention the safety impacts. We did find a crashed drone when we were doing fire fuel clearance behind the houses at Corey Park, and it was a small drone. Now, Ramona Arechica, our Natural Resource Manager, spoke with Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary staff last week, and they were lamenting over the difficulty they're having enforcing. And they said, they related that those small drones can actually cause more stress to the wildlife, because they're quiet, and they're stealth, and they get into those areas, whether it's a paragon nest site, or where the shorebirds are nesting, those remote areas where wildlife least expects to see that. So that was another interesting point. Lastly, I wanted to mention the effect of drones on the park visitor experience. We just completed the survey of our park visitors. 2,400 county park visitors were surveyed this spring. And your county parks have a visitor satisfaction rating of 99%. 99% of the visitors in county parks found their experience good and very good. And people are coming out to the parks for the physical well-being, the emotional, and the psychological well-being that nature provides. And I contest that drones could be distracting from that experience. So let's keep it that way. I'll be happy to serve on a committee. I like to help towards better enforcement and education, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thanks.
Supervisor Tissian.
Just a quick question, Marlene. In this area here where it says trespass, and then it gets into parks, it says, "Prohibits use of self-propelled model aircraft of any kind in county parks, except in specifically designated areas." Do you have designated areas? You don't. So for us, it would be, okay.
And we're just in the, we've received one request for a scientific research permit to use drones on San Bruno Mountain. This was California Academy of Sciences and an Associated University to do a study on unique plant types. And we have not approved that because we're still learning what would not impact the wildlife, the migratory birds, what's on the mountain. So we're looking at that very carefully. Though there are a lot of benefits, I didn't mention all the beneficial uses that we see for using drones appropriately in county parks. And there are quite a few.
Supervisor Pike.
Two quick things. So, you know, all the problems which you cited, I mean, today, those are prohibited. The issue is really enforcement and education, right?
Correct.
Which is a biggie. And then, your last point, I think was an important one, is, you know, there are other beneficial uses, so if, we ought to have some kind of a waiver process anytime we do something, because we're not going to be able to think everything, you know?
Correct, yeah. Good, thanks.
I just wanted to say, just a couple quick things to the subcommittee and to you. There are other recreational areas in the county. For instance, Costa Noah comes to mind, where, you know, it's not a county park, but it is a recreational area. And I've been there, and there have been drones flying overhead, and it does ruin that experience. So just to say, there are other areas that I think should be looked at. And the other thing, I just wanted to, on the user satisfaction survey, 99% of the folks think the county parks are great. I can attest to that, because a week or so ago, I took some young kids out to Memorial Park, first time they'd ever been around a campfire, first time they'd ever camped, first time they'd ever been in the outdoors. And despite my camp chair having a hole burned in it from one of the kids being unsupervised, which wasn't my fault. I just wanted to say that it was a glorious experience, and you all in the department do a fantastic job with our San Mateo County parks. They're just so beautiful. Thank you for everything that you do.
I'll pass that along to staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else, Mr. Byers, on that issue that we need to?
No, I think that concludes the staff's presentations. I don't know if you have any speaker cards today.
Speaker cards, yes.
Yes.
Well, while we're waiting for the speaker, I just want to thank County Council's Office and the airport and our park department. This has really been a wonderful learning experience.
We do have eight speakers.
We have eight speakers?
That's right. The first is Frank Dickinson, followed by Jay Lafer.
My name is Frank Dickinson. I fly model airplanes, not drones. And I had a little thing here to say, but basically, I'm very impressed with the presentation. It covered a lot. And, but, my points are that safety is a very serious issue, and that there are many different types of drones, if you want to have something that covers it. There's the quadcopters, which are what you see pictured most places, and there's model airplanes. Please do not mix them all together. Keep them separate, because they do different things in different ways. Model airplanes have an excellent safety record for many, many years. And also, they have responsible operators. Okay? They're a good, clean sport. And drones have good and bad. They have a lot of people that are inexperienced, that think it's a big joke. They have those that are, that take it seriously and fly it like it's a model airplane. Learn the difference between these, and then make a decision. Feel free to call on the model airplane community to ask questions and learn what's going on. One of the specific differences between a drone and a model airplane, most model airplanes are all line of sight. It has to be close enough, I can see it, or I can't do it. A mile away is impossible. A half a mile is impossible. A quarter of a mile, it's marginal. The electronics have been put into drones, so you can turn it on, get in your car, drive away, go out, have lunch, and come back, and it'll have flown a predetermined path, come back and land, sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jay Lafer, followed by Silas Kwak.
Good morning. My name is Jay Lafer. I'm a member of the American Civil Liberties Union of San Mateo County, representing the voices of thousands of our members. This agenda item, legislation relating to drones, mentioned both private usage of drones, as well as, quote, "Whether drone equipment..." as well as quote, whether drone equipment can be utilized by the county. Today's agenda also includes a $2.8 million grant application from the Sheriff's Office to the Department of Homeland Security. The ACLU was concerned that these might be related, and that the county might have been interested in acquiring drones for use by law enforcement. Supervisor Pine has informed us that the Sheriff's Office has no current plans to use drones, and we're glad to hear that. This is however, a good opportunity for us to bring to the Board's attention, the ACLU of California's report on the use of surveillance technology by local governments. In the recent past, other Bay Area officials have faced significant community backlash after acquiring drones without seeking community input. In 2014, for example, the San Jose Police Department secretly bought a drone through a grant, six months later, the purchase was revealed by local journalists, and the department faced public outcry, because there was no formal policy for how drones would be used, only a promise that drones would only be used for one limited purpose. Also in 2014, the Alameda County Sheriff's Office acquired several drones without notifying the public or the county's Board of Supervisors. Again, there was public outcry over the lack of clear rules for the use of those drones. Although no law enforcement drone purchases appear imminent in our county, this is the perfect time for the Board of Supervisors to plan for the future use of drones or other potential surveillance technology. Getting ahead of the issue now is preferable to facing public concerns after the technology has been acquired. The ACLU asks that the Board adopt an ordinance to address the use of drones and related technology. The Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, for example, has now adopted an ordinance covering their use of drones. Further, the report by the ACLU of California that I mentioned, has a model ordinance that you may find useful in your own deliberations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next we have Silas Quoc, followed by Sam Neese.
Hello Supervisors. My name is Silas Quoc, I'm a Belmont resident since 1973. I've been flying model airplanes since 1966. I also is a four-time U.S. national champion in model helicopters. I'd like to say some information about model airplanes, and that I fly, and they're very different type of craft, commonly known as drones. Model airplanes are not drones. In radio-controlled model aviations, the method of controlling these model aircrafts are visual registration. We control the aircraft based on what the modeler can see. The distance and height of these models are limited by the modeler, that what they can see. When the model is greater than three hundred feet or so, we can see them, we can control them. So we do not fly far, far away. A difference between the drones is that they normally, as most of them are flown, known as first-person view. That's when the camera is mounted on the model, or the drones, and they can download the video information through a goggle or video screen. They can fly much, much further away, where model airplane cannot. I fly model aircraft, I do not fly drones. Model aircraft are traditionally, modeler do not mount any cameras. We're not interested in seeing other people's privacies or concerns, we don't look at anything other than our interest is mainly just looking at how our model flies. The radio control used in a model, or a model aircraft, is utilizing something called frequency harping spectrum equipment. They are virtually immune and interference has a range over three miles. But again, since we're only flying about three hundred feet away, that distance is not an issue. Our aircraft is, we do not want to fly over three hundred feet, is because a lot of these models cost over $2,000. We have no interest in losing any one of our toys, because they're very expensive, and they're very difficult to build on top of that. We, when we, if we operate within the five miles requirement of St. Carlos Airport, I'm sure that these folks already has our number, I call them every time we fly, and they have my number, they have my contact information, and we do follow all FAA regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next we have Sam Neese, followed by Jerry Shores.
Good morning, members of the Board. My name is Sam Neese, I reside on Emerald Hill Road in Redwood City. I'm an FAA certified full-scale pilot, and a radio-controlled glider pilot, flyer. So, I've looked at clouds from both sides now, to quote Joni, anyhow, excuse me, I'm also an attorney practicing in San Mateo. Now, I have here a picture of a typical radio-controlled glider. It's, it weighs ten ounces, and there's no propeller, no noise, and it's, at ten ounces, it's much lighter than a Canada goose. With no propeller, no noise, very lightweight, there's very little impact if this thing should happen to bump into a person, or another, or something else. Anyhow, then, the main thing I'm going to talk about today is that, under the FAA regulations, there is adequate separation between full-scale aircraft and gliders, at least as pertains to Bedwell Bayfront Park. One other thing about the Bedwell Bayfront Park I should just mention, is we've talked, other speakers have mentioned the Menlo Park ordinance prohibiting all aircraft at Menlo Park. Nobody's mentioned the last phrase, which says, "except in designated areas," and we have a request in with the city to designate a glider-only area, so the issue's not dead there. Anyhow, going, getting back to adequate separation, am I out of time? Two minutes?
You are.
I am?
You are out of time. Do you want to just wrap it up?
Yeah, I could, just that, under the Federal Aviation Regulations, fourteen, Code of Federal Regulations, Part 91, Section 119, Minimum Altitudes, provides that full-scale aircraft has to maintain an altitude of at least a thousand feet. And the regulations on gliders are four hundred feet, so you've got a six hundred-foot buffer there, except taking off at landing, but I can get into the mechanics and the geometry of that, but you have to be pretty close to the airport to get below that. So, with that, I will yield, and if anybody has any questions, either now or later, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Now we have Jerry Shores, followed by Jennifer Pfaff.
I can barely say good morning. My name is Jerry Schwartz, I am here on behalf of the American Civil Liberties Union of San Mateo County. Jay already spoke about our concerns, which are not, which are with the potential purchase and use of drones by public entities, within the county, by the county, or by the sheriff, or any public entity. He mentioned a report that has some suggestions, and I'm going to enumerate the highlights of that report. First step in any purchase of drones is to determine what they're going to be used for, why they are the best solution for whatever problem they're addressing, and what the impacts might be on civil liberties, and whether there are alternatives that might have fewer impacts. The second issue is the costs. Now, the costs are not just the purchase price, they are ongoing operations and maintenance. And there are non-monetary costs. These include the impact that use of drones might have on privacy, free speech, and civil rights, and the loss, potential loss of trust of the public in the law enforcement or other unit that might be using them. People are very sensitive to loss of privacy. We urge two things, I'll just finish up here, that anybody, any public entity purchasing drones should have a use policy in place before the purchase, and should have an impact report on the impact on public's privacy and civil rights.
Thank you.
Next we have Jennifer Pfaff, followed by Dan Adams.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Pfaff, I'm from Burlingame. Thank you very much for this extremely informational presentation, I'm, I feel like a tsunami has hit, because I'm so overwhelmed with all the information. I'm here today because about six months ago, I was at the county park, the Crystal Springs Trail, and we go to our beautiful parks often, and I think they've become popular, so much more popular probably, because we're all stressed, and the areas become so dense, and this is one place where we can get one bit of calm and solitude. And for the first time, I saw a drone, and I felt almost as if I was watching the jets, since I've never seen a drone before, and I was horrified, I thought, what is that? And it's the drone. And so I emailed Dave Pine, who I know, and our council, and I just couldn't believe something like this would be allowed, and I thought immediately of the wildlife and all the disturbances, and now seeing how ubiquitous they've become, I'm even more concerned. But I wanted to originally find out if they were forbidden, and I can see now they're forbidden. I didn't see a sign, I looked around, but I didn't see a sign, but it looks as if there's an effort being made to install them, which is great, but of course, signs are only as good as enforcement can be, with any rules we have in the county or even in the cities. So, I guess I wanted to encourage, whatever, however you're able to make really strict enforcement, whether that's a fine, or whatever it is, it sounds as if it's really hard to even catch anyone, so you've got your hands full, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we have Dan Adams, followed by our final speaker for this item, Carol Ford.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors and others in the room. So I am an engineer, I work for a company that's developing technology for drones. I think it's, it is an exploding technology, it's a very interesting time. There are many groups, for instance, who are working on kind of state-of-the-art machine perception and ability of drones to have enough processing power, to actually be able to recognize things in the environment, and try to not crash into things, which will be helpful if the world starts being filled with drones flying around. I think like any product, there's opportunities for good and bad products, and for good and bad use of those products, and I think it's very interesting to think about regulations as a way to try to foster better products. And there are trade-offs that are made every time somebody buys a drone or designs one, they have to do with size, they have to do with flight time, they have to do with various capabilities. But drones can be louder or quieter, they can be lighter or heavier, and they can be smarter or dumber in terms of where they fly and how they fly. So I think it's fantastic, the wealth of information that's been shared today is outstanding. I think it's great to have a subcommittee, and I think it'll be very beneficial to learn, particularly from our local technical community, what things are being developed, and then to try to steer legislation to foster better drones. They are incredibly compelling products, because they're very easy to fly, you can have a drone that's this big, that has a camera, you can wear goggles, so that it's like you're flying around like a bird, and anybody can use one of these things, and with not too much training, all of a sudden have a view that humans have never been able to have. And so, they have great potential for disrupting wildlife, they also have a way to enable people to monitor wildlife. It's a very complex issue. So anyways, thank you very much, good luck.
Thank you.
Our final speaker, Carol Ford.
Good morning, I'm Carol, to President Slocum and the rest of the Supervisors, I'm Carol Ford, the President of the San Carlos Airport Pilots Association, and I'd like to commend you on setting up the subcommittee, I think it's a great idea. We were able to provide assistance and support to Menlo Park's council when they were setting up their ordinance, so we would be happy to do the same and give any information and support we can, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are no more speakers.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody who came to speak on the drone topic, thank you to Supervisor Groom and Supervisor Horsley for bringing this matter forward, and we look forward to your report and recommendations later on.
I just want to thank Chris Hunter real briefly, he had, was very instrumental in helping to put all this together, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hunter.
I'd like to thank Mr. Hunter as well, he actually proposed having that drone fly in the chambers, and I dissuaded him from that.
Were there drones filming the whales in Pacifica? Yeah, of course. All right, moving on. Item number nine, Assessor County Clerk Recorder, a resolution authorizing the hiring of retired Principal Auditor Appraiser Robert Ines for an extra help position to assist with appeals and matters in the Superior Court. And Mr. Ines obviously worked in the Assessor's office for a long time, and Mr. Church is here to talk about this issue.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, Mr. Malphey, Mr. Byers. This is a request to rehire Mr. Bob Ines, who has worked in the Assessor's office for some thirty-five years, he retired recently as a Principal Auditor Appraiser. He is an expert in the areas of embedded software, aircraft, and biotech valuations. There are a number of cases currently pending involving each of those areas. One of the most notable of those cases is Genentech, which is now pending in the Superior Court, in which Mr. Ines played a significant role. So Mr. Ines is being brought back to assist County Council on a variety of these complex and sophisticated appeals. He possesses extensive knowledge and institutional memory of the assessment and appeals process. He knows the specifics of what occurred during the course of the valuations and appeals, why certain things were done or not done, and the nature of the discussions with the taxpayers' auditors. None of that institutional memory is captured in the record, and yet, much of that information is necessary and critical in order for County Council to effectively represent the county's position. So the resolution before you is to rehire Mr. Ines prior to the hundred-and-eighty-day sit-out period required under PAPRA, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Questions?
Just a quick question more. If we, go ahead and allow him to be rehired, will you be out looking for new people to fill that position down the road?
We have appointed a person already to fill that position, his position is filled, so we are bringing him back to assist on the, to assist County Council. So we've hired a person to take over his work on aircraft valuations and biotech valuations. He's being brought back as an extra help.
Other questions? No? Supervisor Horsley?
No, I don't have a question, I was going to make a motion, but.
Let me just ask a quick question, is Mr. Ines, you mentioned embedded software and Genentech, and I'm familiar with those cases, are those the two primary things that Mr. Ines would be working on?
Those are the primary things to assist County Council on Genentech, and these appeals relate to the valuations done while you were the Assessor, 2000 to 2005, and they have filed appeals also from '06 through '15. So routinely, Genentech files these appeals, but also, as you know, Mr. President, Mr. Ines is an expert in aircraft. But also, as you know, Mr. President, Mr. Ines is an expert in aircraft valuations and, and in addition to biotech valuations, and, and very knowledgeable in embedded software, which is a big issue right now with Genentech and with the aircraft litigation. So that is primarily what he will be working on.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Other comments, questions? Motion?
So I'll make the motion to approve the resolution authorizing the hiring of the retired Principal Auditor Appraiser Robert Ines.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Church.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item number 10, which is a, a resolution approving the countywide local hazard mitigation plan for the unincorporated area of San Mateo County and amending the San Mateo County General Plan to incorporate the local hazard mitigation plan and annex. Mr. Monowitz.
Good afternoon, President Slocum, members of the board, Mr. Malp and Mr. Byers. Item 10 before you is an update to an important component of our general plan known as the local hazard mitigation plan. The local hazard mitigation plan is important because it establishes policies and programs to address a wide range of hazards, both natural and man-made. It's also important because after certification by the board and by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the county will be eligible to apply for and to receive federal hazard mitigation planning grants. Now, as you can imagine, coordinating these policies and programs requires coordination with a wide variety of other agencies and departments. And as the former planner who processed the current version of the local hazard mitigation plan, I can tell you that level of coordination is not always easy. So I would like to express my deep appreciation to Rob Bartoli and Lieutenant Fogarty from Office of Emergency Services. They partnered to prepare this plan, and will be making the presentation this morning. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Bartoli from the Planning and Building Department.
Good afternoon, President Slocum, members of all of the supervisors, Mr. Malp and Mr. Byers. My name is Rob Bartoli, and I am a planner in the San Mateo County Plan Department, and I will be presenting you the hazard mitigation plan for the unincorporated part of the county along with the general plan amendment, and then I'll be passing it over to Lieutenant Fogarty, who will also be part of this presentation. For a brief overview of what we're going to talk about in the PowerPoint, we're going to talk about the conformance with CEQA and the general plan of the hazard mitigation plan, a product description of what the hazard mitigation plan is, the update process so far, public outreach that has been conducted for the plan, the actions and maintenance of the actual plan itself, the language of the general plan amendment they were proposing, and staff's recommendations. What the local hazard mitigation plan is, is it's approved by FEMA, and so far, we actually, on Friday, we got a letter back from FEMA having a pending, approval pending adoption. So FEMA has reviewed it and approved the plan. They are waiting for the local agencies to adopt. We are adopting volume one and volume two of this local hazard mitigation plan. It's a multi-jurisdiction plan with 29 agencies in the county. Volume one is the overall plan. It describes the description of the overall planning process. It involves the public involvement process as well, the overview of the planning area, so the entire county itself, the risks for natural hazards in those areas, and the plant maintenance for the next five years. FEMA requires the jurisdiction to adopt a local hazard mitigation plan every five years, so we'll be here in five years again to do this, but the maintenance plan in between, and also county-wide mitigation actions. Volume two is then jurisdiction, jurisdiction-specific. So we are adopting the unincorporated annex of volume two. Each jurisdiction in the county will also be adopting that. That was part of this plan, will be adopting their annex specifically in volume two. It looks at our natural hazard, looks at our risks, and look at, at specific actions that the county is proposing. Regarding to the general plan, and CEQA's county staff has reviewed the local hazard mitigation plan, and it is in compliance with the appropriate sections of the county's general plan, including natural hazards and man-made hazards policy sections. And regarding CEQA, the general plan amendments and the plan itself are both exempt from CEQA for a variety of reasons, and those listed are here. This project is consistent with the general plan, it's a feasible and planning study, it's a data, a basic data collection and research, and it's also the general rule that it is not a project. Because we have, while we have actions in the plan, as we go through those actions, each of those may have their own CEQA process. So if we need to deal with an actual physical improvement, we will look at the CEQA when that improvement comes forward. And with that, I will turn it over to Lieutenant Fogarty.
Good afternoon. So this version of the plan was actually created with a consultant by the name of Tetra Tech. What we do is we include all cities in the county, all of them participate in it, other than two. All of them are developing their own individual protocols as well. The hazard plan is the main, is the key to maintaining eligibility for funding, as was already expressed for FEMA. So that's the reason why we're coming to you today, is to have you adopt it, so that we can then make sure that we are fully prepared in case a critical incident happens here in San Mateo County. The process consisted of developing a planning team. After they end up, and they were the ones coordinating the entire process, they served as the guiding body for the plan itself. The steering committee serves as the advisory board and to the, to the management team to provide as many interested participation as we could. During that process, we met once a month from December 2015 through June of 2016 to review this. The planning process also took, had a part of it involved with exercises that related to the plan, so we could actually develop what, what we need to be prepared for, for instance, here in San Mateo County. There are a total of seven meetings, and that does not include the survey, which I'll be talking about in the future. The planning partners included municipalities and districts with an interest in the plan. Those entities then developed jurisdictional annexes to be covered under that plan as well. The county had an internal planning team. That planning team consisted of, as you already heard, county planning and building, county office of emergency services, department of public works, county council, county ISD, office of sustainability, and along with representatives from both Supervisor Horsley and Supervisor Pine's office. The public outreach, as you can see, what we heard from the public was three things, that they wanted to strengthen infrastructure, strengthen critical facilities, and provide for better information about risk in vulnerable areas. What we did for part of, for public outreach was we actually sent out a survey. The survey actually had over 1,100 people respond, and unincorporated area consisted of the third, third highest level of response. Additional outreach included description, distribution of information in Civil Dragon by Health, social media outreach, presentation to Emergency Services Council, and as you might know, a booth at the June disaster preparedness fair. The county will be maintaining a website regarding the local hazard mitigation plan. The website has both the plan, agendas, and minutes from the steering committee, a short distribution of facts, and contact information regarding the plan, and we will be maintaining that page for the next five years. The steering committee crafted several goal, visions, and mission statements. These statements provide the framework for the mitigation actions in the plan. Hazard mitigation plan covers only five years, so projects capable of completion in five years are the ones that take precedence. Items likely to be accomplished show FEMA in the state of California that mitigation is a priority for us, and we take it seriously here in our county. Items containing this action plan are not legally required to be completed in five years, but efforts should be made to achieve as much as feasibly possible for establishing a more resilient community, and to show the state of California and FEMA proactive process. We reviewed the risks and hazards for unincorporated portions of the county, and each hazard, the frequency of the events, number of people exposed, and the vulnerability of facilities to these hazards. The plan looked at the impacts of climate change on these hazards. Sea level rise was one of the top hazards that we discussed. We know the topics of sea level rise and climate change are evolving, and we will be looking at the latest scientific research on this topic when the plan is updated again in five years. We have a number of actions in the plan that support ongoing efforts on the topic of sea level rise, and as you can see, we have listed the hazards there in the plan. Wildfire, earthquake, severe weather, landslides, flood, tsunamis, drought, and dam failure. Some examples in the mitigation plan, there are actually 69 specific actions and seven countywide actions that are listed. Mitigation plan takes action or addresses issues to be strengthened and minimized the impact of hazards on our community. A few listed examples that we have included, the county will protect and preserve and enhance natural features such as wetlands that serve as natural mitigation against the impacts of flooding, climate change, and associated sea level rise. Identify means to coordinate, collect, and store damage assessment data in GIS format for each natural hazard, and coordinate mitigation planning and project efforts while planning area to leverage all additional resources available to the planning partnership, including work with existing, within the existing joint powers agreement.
And just to continue, we talked about plan maintenance over the course of the five years. We have it built into our plan. It is an important thing that we do. We have annual reporting that is required by each member agency as part of the plan. This is key to remember to update the plan, that it is a living, breathing document. So over the course of the five years, if we see actions that need to be changed, we can make those changes. If we have new information about a hazard that is now affecting us, we can also implement those, those changes as well. And also then to continue coordination within county departments for grant funding opportunities and with other jurisdictions. FEMA, CALOES really wants to see us coordinate our applications with other jurisdictions in our county. Wrapping up one or three jurisdictions with, together to, in a grant application to the state or FEMA, that gives us a greater chance, because now we're not competing against each other for those federal funds. We're not competing against other areas. Regarding the general plan amendment, the planning commission both approved the general plan amendment, the proposed general plan amendment, and the local hazard mitigation plan at their July meeting. As part of the general hand that we're looking to do is that by incorporating by reference the, the local hazard mitigation plan in the county's general plan in section, Policy 15.17, in the natural hazard section of the county's general plan, we have potential and have the eligibility for up for more than 75% of public assistance after a disaster from the state and from, and federal government. The proposed language is in front of you, it's also in your staff report. What we will be out looking to do is adding a number one to the existing language there, or the proposed, it says, where it says "support," that is the existing language. Number two, the underlying section would be the new language we'd be looking to adopt into the general plan, to apply and periodically update the local hazard mitigation plan, the LHMP, and annex adopted by the board of supervisors and incorporated into the general plan in 2005 and 2016. And with that, our recommendation to the board of supervisors is that we, a adoption of a resolution approving a countywide local hazard mitigation plan and local hazard mitigation plan annex for the unincorporated San Mateo County, and by amending the county general plan to incorporate the local hazard mitigation plan and annex by reference, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
I just had a comment. I want to thank everyone involved for the incredible amount of work it took to put this document together. It is, it is voluminous. You know, what I've learned in, at least, you know, in talking with staff about the plan is that it's, it's much more than an emergency response plan, it's really a land use plan. And also, it turns out that when we apply for FEMA grants, they require us to tie back to this plan. So I think the foundation here will be helpful for that purpose. So I guess, again, I, I thank everyone for their hard work on it. I think as we continue to revise this going forward, we should, you know, continue to look at it as both a land use and a, and a public safety plan. And we'll see, we should kind of monitor how we're doing against these goals as we go forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor.
No, I was just going to make a motion if there were.
Oh, just a, just one quick comment, and when Steve Monowitz did this about five years ago, so I've done it before when I was a sheriff, but you did a great job, Bill. And of course, you know, I know Supervisor Pine and myself both have, well, I guess we all do have issues with sea level rise, like cosi, because of the increasing power of king, king tides. We just see an awful lot of erosion, and so having this document is really important in terms of, you know, for FEMA and the future. I know, I well know that unless you have this documentation, that your eligibility for FEMA grants is dramatically reduced, or can be enhanced, and this, your document really enhances that. So congratulate Rob, you've done a great job. They learn from the best with Steve, so thanks for doing this. It's a great, it's, it's a great report.
Thank you. Motion?
I'm going to move to adopt the resolution approving the countywide local hazard mitigation plan and local hazard mitigation plan annex for the unincorporated San Mateo County, and amending the San Mateo County General Plan to incorporate the local hazard mitigation plan and annex by reference.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you for the report. Item number 11, is a Measure A Matter Resolution approving the transfer of $6,200 to the plant, Department of Planning and Building to fund a roadway improvement fee waiver for improvements to the 1,300 block of Cedar Street in Montara.
Just a quick comment on this. Essentially, it's a group of homeowners that really want to, to, you know, it's, it's not a paved street, and they want it to do asphalt, but to bring it up to county standards is really, not really possible, and it's not something that is desirable, but we did offer to help them by waiving, or at least covering the planning and building fees. So if they want to go ahead with it, that, that's the one thing they could do. But they, they're going to end up having to, all of the homeowners are going to have to contribute. One of the reasons we don't want to do it is that if we do it, we end up with all kinds of water, well, you know, we have to do, I forget what you call the, you have to, because you have, the roadway has to have bioswells, and some of the homes also have encroachments, we would end up having to take over the encroachments. It was just way too complicated, so we decided to allow them to actually do kind of a less than county standards to improve their roadway. And in any case, I would make a motion to approve the resolution approving the, the transfer of the $6,200 to the Department of Planning and Budget to help them with their roadway improvements, which are, of course, like, as I said, less than county standard.
Second.
I moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Supervisor Horsley. Moving on to item number 12, which is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Friends of Hutter and Wonderlic Parks for improvements to the arena located in the parks, in an amount not to exceed $30,000, and authorizing the director of the Parks Department to execute the agreement. Supervisor Horsley?
Well, again, this is, it is a riding ring, and actually, there are, it's open to the public, so it is, it's, in fact, I'm kind of looking forward to taking my granddaughter there for some horseback riding lessons. And one of the things that it does do is that, you know, rings, I mean, I'm not doing it just for myself.
Don't you fall off the horse.
I'm not going to fall off the horse, no. I actually can ride a horse, surprisingly, but.
It's all those parades.
All the parades, yeah. It was, it was kind, it was fun bringing a horse in a parade. Everybody should have that opportunity once in their lifetime. In any case, what it does, it really improves the ring, and one of the things that it really, that you might be interested in terms of conservation, is that it really reduces the amount of water that is required to, you know, keep the, the, the surface in good condition. It goes from like, I forgot exactly, but it's like a one hundredth, a hundredth of what the, I think it saves something like 3,000 gallons or so. So it's a, it's, it's a conservation, and it's good for the horses, and it's good for the public. And, and you know, this is a great facility that, it is a beautiful place. It is just an idyllic place. So in any case, I'm proud to, I'm going to make a resolution, or motion to approve the resolution authorizing an agreement with the Friends of Hutter and Wonderlic Parks for the improvement to the arena located in Wonderlic County Park.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Horsley. Moving on to item 13, which is a resolution authorizing a one-time $46,000 grant of district-specific Measure A funds to Casa Circulo in Redwood City to create a safer and more efficient use of program space, and authorizing the county manager, his designee, to prepare and execute the grant agreement for the term of July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017. For those of us that may not remember about Casa Circulo, if you remember the young dancers who in January performed at our reorganization meeting, they were from Casa Circulo, but Casa Circulo does a lot more than just teach dance. It's a, it's an amazing place that's run by volunteers, primarily mothers of the kids and fathers of the kids, and they do all sorts of wonderful things there. And every time I go there, I'm moved and inspired by these little kids who are there. It's a warehouse across the freeway that they're in, and they're just doing, they're just doing wonderful things. And they also do a lot of work in, in terms of the Day of the Dead celebration that takes place here in the, in the Plata. And they actually, the kids actually make the masks, and they do academic things as well, it's just not all mask painting. But would ask for approval of this, and I would in fact make the motion to approve this resolution for a one-time grant of $46,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you all. Aye. Opposed? Thank you all. Moving on, our favorite part of the agenda, well, one of our favorite parts, is the county manager's report, item number 14.
It's a wonderful report that Michelle Durand does. In the interest of time, I know the board has two items on its closed session. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I was pretty excited about Sarija.
Yeah, that's a great article, if you haven't had a chance to read it. And it really is a, just a fabulous family.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions? No? I think we'll adjourn now to closed session, and we will, we'll report back at the conclusion of...
Actually, President Slocum, given the nature of both these items, I'm going to go ahead and sort of make the announcement now that there's going to be no action, no final action taken in either of the items. They're both simply updates, and then an opportunity to provide some legal advice around some pending matters. So, there's no need to come back on either item.
Okay. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Any reports?
Well, board member reports. We've got to come back for board member reports. Should we do that now? Board member reports? Okay. Who wants to start? Supervisor Horsley?
At a ribbon-cutting event at Surfers Beach that was pretty well-attended by just Jerry Hill, Supervisor Carol Groom, staff from the Coastal Commission, Kevin Mullen. It was organized by Ellie Dahlman, and this is really work that was done by, well, by Nicholas Calderon, actually. We started the project about, oh, maybe two years ago, because we knew that the roadway was in danger of being undermined by the king tides and by the constant erosion. And in that case, it was, was a re-establishment, a rebuilding of the coastal trail, and it really protects Highway One from basically being undermined by the ocean. So, it was a, it was a fun day, and we enjoyed the, it was a beautiful day out in the coast side.
Thank you. Supervisor Pine?
I have three adjourned in memories today. First, adjourned in memory of Kendrick Geddes, who is the daughter of Don Geddes, who serves in the Hillsborough School Board, as I'm sure people have read. They had a tragic car accident in Southern California, and, you know, the loss of a child is just an unbelievable thing. So, our thoughts and prayers go out to their family. Mr. Geddes was also injured, as was his other daughter. So, it's a terrible tragedy. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Dean Seki of Redwood City, who died while abalone diving in Jenner. He was a longtime Coneyo San Mateo HSA employee and served on the Fatherhood Collaborative Council. He was awarded with the Fatherhood Advocacy Award in 2013 for being a community leader and a mentor and a humanitarian. So, we adjourned his memory. And finally, we adjourn in the memory of Mary Griffin from Millbrae. My colleague, Don Horsley, said some very, gave some very nice remarks at Mary's service, and our county manager, Mr. Malpian, sent around a very nice email, you know, very, very briefly. Mary was born in Yuba City and moved to San Francisco, where she taught kindergarten, always loved to sing, and was involved in choruses her entire life. She moved to Millbrae in 1967 and then had a distinguished career on the Millbrae City Council and on this board, was an incredible advocate for children, and left a tremendous legacy and affecting change for children and all the citizens of San Mateo County.
Hi, excuse me. I have an adjourned memory. Dennis Newhoff, he was the son of Gloria and the late Tony Newhoff. He was a native San Francisco, but he was raised in Westlake and attended Our Lady and Mercy Grammar School, Ceremony High School, and Skyline College. He was an active parishioner at OLM and was a devoted Eucharistic minister. He also worked at George Jets and Safeway. But his true, his greatest achievement was being a true visionary scouting, true visionary scouting high school sports throughout the Bay Area. He spent a lot of time with Merv Harris, who was the San Francisco Examiner's Sports Editor, and they were devoted to high school sports and respected and enjoyed each other's company while traveling from school to school. He was also called the Iceman. He was a regular telephone caller on KNBR's Gary Radnich Show. So, he will be sorely missed. He was actually a neighbor around the corner from me when I grew up. And then, of course, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Seniors on the Move Tuesday, October 25, at the County Event Center. And then, I'd be remiss if I didn't do the upcoming Age Well Drive Smart seminar. Foster City Thursday, September 29, at the Foster City Recreation Center, and Daly City Tuesday, October 18, at the Westlake Community Center. Thank you, Mr. President.
Was that September 19?
September 29, in Foster City. I can give you a ride over if you need it.
I'm assuming you're a good driver.
That's a big assumption.
That's right. She's graduated many times.
I've taken the class so many times, I think I am now.
She drives that big car.
That's right.
Everybody gets out of the way.
Well, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Nicholas Nick Goodwin, who was the husband of Caroline Goodwin, our San Mateo County poet laureate. It was quite a shock to learn of the news of his passing. But Nick was an avid cyclist. He loved riding the dirt bike trails on the Montero Mountain just near their home. He was 59 years old. Nick met his wife Caroline in Sitka, Alaska, where he was a fish, I don't know what this is, but a fish culturist for the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration at the Littleport Walter Research Station. And Caroline and he were married for some 20 years. And according to Caroline, in talking about her late husband, said Nick loved cycling on the coast and would tell many stories about the wildlife and natural beauty he had felt privileged to enjoy. He also loved to fish, camp, and hike, and he was famous at the office of Plumworks Plumbing for his tenor renditions of Happy Birthday and the theme song from the Beverly Hillbillies. He wore his Grinch pajamas with pride and made beautiful spice cakes for special occasions at the office. And he was born in Columbus, Ohio, in 1957, and he was a hardcore Frank Zappa fan. Leaves, Nick leaves behind two daughters, Naomi, who's 19, and Izzy, who's 12, and they were the center of his life. And together, I know we all extend our sincerest condolences to Caroline and her extended family. Thank you. With that, we shall adjourn.